Okay, so school meeting minutes on January 24th.
I'll second.
Wait, no, I got it. Okay. I didn't, I didn't. Okay, any discussion or edits? Changes? And then we'll call for a vote, call favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we'll move on to the superintendent's report.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, we'll start the superintendent's report tonight with, um, highlights and recognitions. And so, um, I just have a few, um, since we haven't had a ton that's happened since the last time we met last week. But, uh, we have had a couple of exciting things happen. Uh, first and foremost, I had a chance to attend the chorus and jazz ensembles, first concert of the year, um, last Wednesday evening in the Dolphin. Um, and it was a fantastic, um, display of both of our musicians and, um, and our vocal talents. Um, the crowd was really moved by some of the pieces. Um, and I think it was really entertaining. Um, I think John Coltrane piece really, uh, was, uh, kept people moving in their seats a little bit. And, um, I think the, uh, the band piece at the end, Seasons of Love, was great when it camped it off. It probably apropos for the time, so, um. In fact, I was still moved by that. I reached out to the principals and to, um, Jonathan Kane, who did a great job, um, conducting that night and getting everyone ready. And asked if they could, um, do a reprise of the concert for the, uh, elementary students. And so we're in the process right now of putting together a mini field trip kind of in district. Uh, we'll bring our elementary students over to the Dolphins so that they have a chance to, um, see their folks from the, um, elementary jazz before, um, and just taste of kind of what they have to look forward to, um, as they move into, um, elementary jazz and some of the offerings that they have there. Uh, so we're really excited. Uh, and then also just today, we had, um, where that three of our students have been recognized by the Scholastic Art Awards for artwork they submitted in December. The Scholastic Art Awards are one of the longest running and most prestigious art recognitions for teenagers in the United States. And so a huge honor. Uh, and the three students from Lennox that were recognized are Finn Jolly, received a silver key award for his mixed media self-portrait. Um, this is an impressive feat, considering the fact that Finn is a sophomore. So we still have, um, quite a bit of time ahead of him to continue his work. Uh, C.C. Carey also received an honorable mention for her incredibly creative and thought evoking zine, um, Tread the Limbo. And for those of you who are unaware, zine is a self-published magazine, um, of yourself produced artwork. So, uh, the judge was impressed by that performance as well. And then Julianne Harwood received an honorable mention for her mixed media work that combines photography with a word reading that represents different idioms. This work, um, that she's creating is part of her AP portfolio, um, that she has submitted part of her AP project. So congratulations to the Finn C.C. engineer. And, um, you'll be able to view the key awards in the near future. Uh, once we have the information, we'll wait up and publish and we'll share that across social media elements. And so that, uh, concludes the highlights and my conditions. Uh, although I would be remiss if I didn't just say, um, that we are very thankful for our law enforcement partners who helped perform, um, a couple of safety drills at both schools, um, this past week in the mid- break. So, uh, we're really thankful for their support, uh, hopefully next week and from the Massachusetts State Department. That said, we're going to move into, um, the next phase of the superintendent's report, which are presentations of budgets. Uh, so we've invited Brenda Kelly, the principal of Morris, Kim Leon, the special education director, um, and Lisa Bukowski, chief, uh, operations and, uh, superintendent of operations finance, to share their budget presentations, uh, with you this evening. Um, just so that we're all, uh, aware of the format of the night, I asked them to prepare a very brief overview, focusing primarily on what's changed. Uh, so, you know, what's new, um, whether there are either major cost increases or decreases, um, briefly show why that's the case. Uh, and then really be here for more of a dialogic, um, opportunity to have conversation with the superintendent. I may answer any questions that, um, that you may have for them. So, uh, that's kind of the format. Maybe prepare, um, a very brief budget presentation, um, and to be available for questions. So with that being said, uh, I want to invite Brenda Kelly, the principal of Morris, to share with us the budget presentation prepared for the new budget for Morris Elementary for the spring 24th.
Share the screen.
Share that. I can, I can do it.
Just a minute, oh. It's like it's our screen sharing enabled here, so she can share Brenda's budget.
I just, um, I wanted to find your email and I just did, so I can do it.
You want to view the.
It's a PDF. Will a PDF, free PDF editor do it?
Then we'll go to the right, over the right sheet down one.
Oh, I see.
Yep.
I don't know if I can see that.
Right there, right. Can I just?
Yeah, I'm sorry, Mark. If you could just go to the next second slide.
Yes.
There we go. There you go. So, thank you for giving me this opportunity to, um, present the 2022, 2023 budget. First off, as always, I'd like to, um, thank my staff for all their hard work and dedication over the past year, um, even last year. You know, we're still going through some changing times here, um, as, uh, the pandemic evolves. I just thought I'd, um, share some quotes from some of our fifth grade students about Morris. Um, we are, um, just making sure that all of our needs are met. You can just see Sam, um, feels that all students belong, that all students, um, feel like they belong at Morris. Um, last year, we purchased, thanks to all of you, um, some, um, opportunities for students for flexible seating. So what this student just made a comment on how the standing desk helps her stay focused during the day. Um, another student commented on how, um, they feel very fortunate to have Shakespeare and Audubon Society come in each week. And, um, we offer band lessons. And, uh, most important thing to me is the very last comment where it says Morris is probably to be a kind person. So, um, you know, thank all of you and the staff for ensuring that our students are healthy, safe, and are ready to learn when they come to school. Okay, next slide, please. So the first slide you'll see is, um, the building administration, which is the principal budget in kindergarten. There is just a slight increase here for supplies. Um, we really, over the past, um, six to eight months, seen an increase in purchasing supplies, just with the inflation. Um, a ream of paper is just outrageous right now. So there's just a slight increase there and, um, with contractual obligations, um, amongst the teaching staff. Next slide, please. Um, again, the same thing is true with the art program and, um, grades one through, um, five with the supplies. There's just, we've just seen such an increase, um, in the cost of supply. So we, I increased the art budget from eighteen hundred to two thousand, just to accommodate for that. And then, um, the Audubon program is, um, incorporated into our, um, program as well. Next slide, please. Here is the instructional service, um, slide, um, where we have the fun field trips, um, assemblies. You will see, um, an increase in our cost in curriculum. Um, that is for our literacy footprints. We, um, our reading program, we are making sure that all the teachers have, um, the available, um, books, um, for the instructional needs of, um, the students. Um, I also just want to say we're looking into a science program for the 2023, 2024, um, budget. We are going to be piloting next year. Um, so there's some curriculum development and professional development that we will be doing, um, the next school year. Um, right now, um, Morris does not have a science program. So we're really not cohesive, um, across the grade levels. So we're looking at building that cohesiveness amongst, um, the grade levels, um, and the students. Next slide, please. Um, instructional technology and music are really slight increases. Um, instructional technology, um, uh, Ms. Olander is also our canvas facilitator and champion. And, um, the slight increase there again is due to her contractual obligation. Next slide, please. Um, in library, um, I'm looking to purchase a more diverse, um, selection of books for our students. Um, uh, our librarian is new this year. And over the past year and a half, she has really gone through, um, the books that are at Morris. And we really are in need of, um, some new selections for students. And, uh, we are looking at, um, as I said, increasing our diverse selection. And in our guidance, um, section of the budget, um, I have requested that our guidance counselor, um, increase from, um, a point eight zero to a one FTE. Um, that increase will be coming from, um, the S R funding. Um, but that is to support the, um, social emotional needs, um, within Morris, um, right now. And besides that, there's no other increases. And then other student activities, we have, um, added an additional, um, club to our after-school, um, or before-school programming choice, which is a MAP club. We have piloted it this year and it is going very well. So that is the increase you will see in, um, other student activities. And in health service, there's no, um, increases, um, except for a contractual obligation. Next slide, please. And here you will see that, um, the majority of the Morris budget is, um, given to the instructional needs of the students, a small portion, um, for administration, guidance, and pupil services. Next slide. Um, and again, our variance is just over three percent, three point one three percent, um, for the next school year. And then I just, um, wasn't sure if anyone had any questions for me. And I just also have to say that the students, um, and the staff at Morris are very grateful for Teddy. So thank you so much for approving, um, the convert dog. He has certainly made a difference in his short two weeks at Morris. Any questions?
Well, I did have a question, but.
Yes.
Um, you know, we have a bunch of documents that we have. We also have the entire spreadsheet.
Sure.
For the whole, you know, so I'm kind of trying to look at things simultaneously here. And Melissa, um, maybe you could just, for, it's not going to show on the screen, but maybe you could just kind of, for the school to be sake and anybody who might have access to this document, kind of go over the columns in the spreadsheet, not any particularly given page, you know, what we're looking at.
Are you talking about the complete budget spreadsheet?
Well, it, it, um, let me just go to that for a second, see if that's.
There were no other increases like in P E or the other tabs that you might be seeing besides contractual obligations. I just went through the.
The highlights.
The highlights of what I requested.
Yeah, well, my question was, and Melissa, I, I was just thinking of one of, just any page of the, of the elementary budget or, or, you know, just the ones that has like ten columns, four columns, whatever.
Um, so there's two different types. There's just the spreadsheet and then there's also the PDF that I put together that broken out by, um, each school and their five-year averages. Is that the one you're looking at?
No, I was with, uh, well, yeah, I mean, there is a five-year average column.
Okay.
Yep.
So just give me one second, I'll go right up.
But while she's, while she's pointing out, um, Brenda, my question was, the library book total seems like a very, very low number too. The average of five years was over three thousand. And you, I know you didn't have much last year because kids weren't at school. Um, and so you're going up to a thousand, two hundred fifty, a thousand, but, um, that's about forty books.
Well, if you see, well, one I want to say, um, our, um, P T L, which is phenomenal. Um, we had our book fair this year and they have donated some books to the library. So we were able to purchase some books through the P T L. I also want to say, I think when Melissa will go, when you will see going through that five-year average, that there was not even any purchases for the library during that time. So we are, um, as I said, going through our library, um, books right now. And, um, seven hundred and fifty dollars worth of books will give us quite a few, um, books, um, that we will be able to purchase for the, for the upcoming year.
Okay, good, good, thank you. I don't know if anybody asked this question, but Melissa, I should go through and just talk briefly about the, the columns and, um.
Bob, are we going to be going through the budget book? Is that our intention? Uh, as you, I mean, we usually go through, I mean, I've had additive questions on, on a number of sections, so. I just want to understand the procedure.
Yeah, and that's, yeah, right, that's, yeah, that's, you know, Brenda's made her presentation and now.
And then we'll get into the, and I apologize, I was late.
Yeah, right, if you have questions on a specific section, that's why I wanted to, um, you know, have Melissa kind of just, I like the spreadsheet course.
Sorry, I, I have difficulty moving on in Google, so please go with me.
I can pull it out.
It's my own, it's my own fault. Mr. Redd, let's hear your questions for me right here.
Yeah.
No, they're just, they're just.
Oh, here, I have a question.
Yeah.
Thank you. Do you want to ask me that?
Yeah, I'll get to, I mean, I don't.
Okay, sorry about that, so, um. That's okay. So the, the complete budget booklet is broken out by each building or program area. So, um, Brenda just gave you the overview of Morris. And when you get into the actual budget document, which is shared on the drive, it's got the program strengths highlighted and all of that that Brenda did go over. But we also have under each program, um, for instance, on page eight, where we start with administration, we've detailed the twenty-one budget, twenty-one actual expenditures, five-year average of non-salary expenditures. We thought that was important this year because we had a few blips in our history from, um, the pandemic. So we went back five years to seventeen to, um, prior to the pandemic. Um, and plugged in those numbers so that you would see what was actually spent during, uh, somewhat normal school year.
So seventeen to twenty-one.
Yes, art, or it was fifteen, whatever the five-year period.
Yep.
For fifteen to nineteen. Um, so those numbers are in there for reference. So that you can see the average dollars spent on that line. Um, the twenty-two final budget is what was approved finally. The year-to-date expenditures is through, um, when we gave this to you, so probably about three, two weeks ago, three weeks ago, we plugged in those numbers. And this year we added a few new columns, full-time equivalent F T E for twenty twenty-two and F T Es for twenty twenty-three. So that you can see if there were any changes in personnel in each area within the, um, schools. Um, now we have our initial budget, which is, um, over to the right. That's our preliminary request, the variance to fiscal year twenty-two. And then anything that we could note that would give you more insight as to why things were increasing or decreasing, we put notes over to the right under description of services.
Right, and then Brenda gave us four, four specifics under each.
Yes.
Program, so that's, that is helpful. Okay, thanks. Melissa, so now, uh, over to anybody who wants to ask about any section of the elementary budget. And I don't know if you guys, if you want to go through section by section or just want to ask a quick question.
I can, Simon, I have a question on the overview. Um, you know, I, I was just, um, kind of curious, uh, you have a thought together because we read this a little bit earlier. Um, you know, in, in two instances here in the overview, you reference, uh, uh, in one instance, you, you know, you referenced M-CAS data, uh, indicating a need, um, for science program.
Yes.
Which you had highlighted. I, I, I was kind of curious about that. And then I wondered in some way, um, if, if M-CAS in any way was indicative of, um, a move towards purchasing Framing Your Thoughts. Or, I don't know if they're related, but it's.
Right, so Framing Your Thoughts was purchased before I became principal at Morris Elementary School. And I do know that before the shutdown in March of, um, was that two thousand nineteen?
Twenty.
Twenty. Um, they were looking at also a writing program. So Framing Your Thoughts is more of a graphical, structural program for teaching students how to write. Uh, we are still in the process of going through and looking for, um, a writing program for Morris. Um, the M-CAS science, we have seen, I can just say from what I've seen through the M-CAS data and through my observations at Morris Elementary School in the past year and a half, is our science program or the science that we are using is, is not as cohesive as it could be if we purchased a science, um, program. Um, so I wouldn't say that our M-CAS data is, you know, not where we would like it to be, but I feel like we could do better if we had a cohesive program that built upon each other from year to year. Is there a reason why there's not been a science curriculum? I gotta say, I can't, I, that was before my time. I just know what I know coming in this last year and a half. Sorry.
I have a couple of questions.
Yes.
Actually, really just one. And so in the chart that talks about the grade twenty-five.
Yep.
To the right, it says two new staff for twenty twenty-two. And we're instructional, you can hear notation on the right. And then it says one new aunt period for twenty twenty-three. And I'm just assuming we're not hiring aunts, so I have some fear with the aunt score.
So are we in this, are we in the.
You go, oh, anticipated.
Anticipated. I tried, I was like.
That's hilarious. Yeah, I was.
Okay, so we have, this budget contemplates two new staff being added and then one potential, we're just not sure how that's going to play out. Okay. And, um, that's under the instructional, so the teacher numbers are the same. Is that support instructional or what are we looking at?
So the two, I can explain.
Yeah.
Um, the two new staff were hired in this year. So there were savings in the salary line. And I think it's grades one through five you're looking at right now.
Yeah.
So there were savings in the salary line. So I wrote two new staff. We're not looking to hire two new staff. We did hire two new staff, replaced staff that left.
Okay.
Either retired or left, resigned.
Okay.
So we have new people in place this year that are going to continue.
Okay.
Um, I think that explains it a little bit better.
Yeah, I explained it. But there was a budget item for those staff members. So when we look at the five-year average, at least the placeholder, whether it's the actual person or not, that, those staff members were part of the budget.
The five-year average did not apply to salaries. What you do see last year's salaries in there.
Okay, gotcha. All right, just was a little, just maybe like, I don't know what this means.
One other question to clarify from your presentation, Brenda, for help, the health services increase. I'm just trying to make sure I understand. Is it coming about because the porcelain toss that was covered by S R is longer than covered by S R? So you're therefore responsible for it?
Yes. And there is, um, there, there is a chance that there will be a column, um, column movement in that position, um, either this year or next. So that is, um, there is a portion of that for that as well.
Yeah.
That was, sorry. But.
Uh, I was, I was just going to move on to, uh, just a question on administration. Um, you, you talked about, um, an increasing, uh, one of the concerns and challenges you, you talked about, is it ever increasing amount of paperwork to virtually every aspect of, 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 of your, like, your work? Um, and, and, you know, and as you say, that pulls you away from, you know, your primary function. And, and I wondered if, um, Bob has been given to any way to mitigate that paperwork uh, or, or mitigate the, uh, you know, the timing or lot to those, to, to that paperwork. Is there a way to have, to minimize that impact so that you can really do what you're, what you're.
So, um, I do do what I'm hired to do. It's called, uh.
Don't take that, but that was.
No, it's okay. It's called, uh, the week, the weekend.
It sounded bad or cold.
No, it's okay. It's called the weekend in early mornings. It's fine. It, it is the nature of the job. Um, and I have to say, um, dealing with the pandemic has increased the amount of paperwork. Um, but I can say when we go on, before we leave for February break, I will have, um, observed all of my instructional staff and support staff at least once. They will all have their formative evaluations. Um, so I, you know, I live and breathe this job. I, I love it. The students are my children. I have two grown adults and they're off on their own. So, um, you don't need to worry, I'm, I'm, I'm.
I'm not a worker, so.
It's okay. It, it, it is what it is. It is the nature of the job and you just learn to, um, organize and be very, um, proficient at the things that you need to do.
I have an object too. I would say that, you know, in terms of paperwork and managing workflows, um, Brenda has, just this year alone, uh, introduced a new innovation at Morris, uh, where she's built a dashboard, which is a shared Google spreadsheet that literally links out to every possible thing that you need in order to, you know, run that school and share information back with the teachers. So I think that's been one way where she's tried to reduce the amount of paperwork. Uh, and, and using Google to share back and forth rather, um, than, you know, sending copies back and forth and that thing. So I think that's optimized the workflow a bit, but definitely, um, the COVID, the pool testing, that kind of stuff takes a lot of legwork, uh, contact tracing. You know, so those are the things. And then obviously, um, doing the observations of teachers and the paperwork involved in that. So, um, I think there is places to optimize it by sharing. I think that a new student information system is also going to help, you know, alleviate some of the paperwork as you move forward. Uh, as you grow and use Google, uh, you know, that or all. But, you know, there is still some, you know, brutal paperwork that is just part of being a student principal. Uh, you know, I think, I think Brenda's been very savvy in trying to find ways to, that I think that, that sharing that document with her staff has been a, it's a game changer for, um, helping to facilitate along that.
Not just that, but our, us, and it's funny when people see that they're not in the buildings, they don't know our schools intimately. We run pretty lean and there's not a lot of assistants and extras. And, and you have a, an executive support person who, you know, is vital because of everything to deal with. But. But my understanding is even most of the front office people are in many functions as far as how they're assisting students. And so I, I just want to commend you for that. Appreciate that. It, it's, it's not a place where there's a lot of, you know, everybody's doing, they'll do a lot of things in most of the building, from my experience.
Have a think why sometimes since we have a guidance counselor who is five days a week at Morris?
Um, honestly, I don't think so. I don't think there's ever been so many therapists.
My experience is that we did not. You know, I hired the first one, it's like a three-day-a-week thing years and years ago. And then it was being, agreed with or maybe 28 or something, but it, I, this is the first year of this full-time.
Another.
Next year.
Next year.
And the nature of what a guidance counselor is, has changed remarkably over time. So, you know, historically, a guidance counselor literally counseled children, right? Um, but now they write, um, 504 plans and the staff process, um, which is kind of like the medical, um, cousin to an IEP, an individualized education plan. So they work on those. They are still, you know, the, the counseling with the kids. They're also working with staff and supporting them. Um, so the overall scope of, of the, the position has changed. And they're also doing study groups, they go to classrooms, teach social lessons. And so, um, you know, it's really grown in, in the scope of what guidance counselor does over time.
Yeah, I think that's really important. I mean, we all know there's a giant crisis with mental health with kiddos right now, so.
And that was actually started a little before COVID. So all of the educational, uh, you know, magazines and books before COVID, were talking about students' health crises and depression and, um, you know, looking for dusting with the schools. And so that was all pre-COVID, you know, COVID really exacerbated that condition for us. So, um, it's not just because of COVID, but it's, and that was true from COVID.
I have to say one little thing about that. If, if, and, and just echoing a little bit, but building on what Megan said is that what I noticed in your description, it's really helpful too, about the private job description for each of these positions or departments, is the way when you talk about behavioral, like behavioral coaching and bringing parents and families in. And that's not service that's very easy to get, even if you have resources. It's very hard to find somebody who, they can do, you know, mental health counseling, family counseling. But what are some of the coaching about how to help kids transition? And right out of it, and I definitely remember when my first one was in elementary school, being a little overwhelmed that having, uh, there was a class that we did that we got in the evenings. It was facilitated by, um, by Donna, and it was really great. And really having parents that, you know, here's some coaching we can do around helping you. It makes you feel like it's a team, I think it connects. And it really, people say, oh, get that outside of school. It's, it's really, really, really hard to get. And even if you have resources and the families that struggle with those types of resources, it's just really hard, uh, people doing that. So in any way that we're hoping with that, I think it's great because, you know, we're all just trying to figure things out.
Yeah, that's another role, right? And other places, a social worker may play that role, so they also kind of figure out math a piece as well.
Yeah, I, I, you, you got something up in the art section? It's that, um, that was, um, uh, that, that, when I, after I read it a couple of times, it, it kind of seemed very, uh, I, I tried to look at it from a student's point of view. And, and, and that's where it talks about, um, the demand to create learning opportunities for math and, you know, A. Um, you know, and other subjects in, in a, in a significant way where, uh, it, it seems that, um, you know, students are asked to write about artwork. Students are asked to critique about artwork. And, and I, and I think of, and I, I've tried to put myself in a, and it's also as well good, but I'm trying to put myself in the, in the place of student. And, and, and especially where they're, they're now in an art class, but they're needing to, they're, they're not in a writing class, so they're not in a, they're, and they're, they're not in a, uh, an analysis class. And, and I'm wondering, um, you know, we don't do the same thing with music. Like, I didn't see this type of analysis, and music is highly math-oriented. And certainly offers opportunities for critiquing. And I, I, I'm just wondering if this is, if, if someone's struggling in, 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 in writing, and yet here they are in art. You know, what support perhaps exists for that student who doesn't write well and is now thinks they're in art, but all of a sudden, like, they're not getting a break?
Right, so our, our.
Is that valid? Is that a valid?
Yeah, that's fine, yeah. Our, our teacher, um, does a fantastic job of collaborating with the grade-level teachers. And, um, so it is not, the focus is not writing, but sometimes the, the students will reflect upon each other's art and, and it's, if they need help, and it's right there for their assistance. Um, the fantastic thing about Morris, um, is we have a, an interventionist and support to help the students. And if a student needs support, we're right there to, um, help them. But as I said, the art class is for art, and if a student isn't able to do that, it's okay.
Yeah, I mean, you, you would, it would be kind of silly to have to have a writing intervention for a student in an art class.
Right, right. That, that, art is for art. I can tell you though, um, right before we take the MCAS test, the art teacher will certainly help us out with our geometry. We go over, you know, the, the shapes and things like that.
Yeah.
Thank you. No, I, I mean, that's a good point, but in, to your point, I mean, we definitely have, you know, in all these programs, even more academic than it happened through, you know, standardization and the role of the common core. And, you know, there are tests where you'll see release items where your kids are asked to look at two different pictures and then write about them in comparison to the rest. So, um, you know, this is something that is sometimes asked in the moment's test. So, um, sometimes that forces our hand more seldom than we would want, right? Um, and, but we do make plenty of time for creative expressions required as well. Uh, I think you definitely see that at Morris, definitely, um, at a very high degree and second level.
Well, Brenda, please, because it's a general question. You obviously build a, a very tight budget overall. I think, apart from I can tell you, the only thing you're really adding is the literacy curriculum element. Um, what, what would be on your wish list? Either, you, you mentioned sign, you know, science for still longer term. But, I mean, if you had another $100,000, what are the things that Morris could be doing? Would I, we'd ideally be thinking about?
Well, we would certainly, um, invest in, in, in more student literature for the students. Um, there are certain materials that we could purchase that need just, with the, with the pandemic, um, we sent a lot of materials home and then, especially for our early literacy, um, foundations requires those magnetic boards and those, um, manipulatives. Um, just being able to, um, refurbish some of the materials that might have been lost due to no fault of anyone's. Um, you know, we could have whiteboards in every classroom. Um, expand our flexible seating. I, I mean, the list could go on and on. I would certainly, um, spend that money.
It sounds like it's mostly, it's mostly stuff in a sense that, that the buildings need.
There's a lot of things that we could do differently, um, to help engage some of the students, um, instead of just, you know, sitting at a desk, you know, flexible seating. Um, there are several classrooms where they're sitting on yoga balls and things like that. Or even just, like, refurbishing or getting whiteboards that were the projector, things like that. Um, some of our technology could use some update, just like where the projectors are, having a teacher being able to move about the room and not stuck in one spot, all those types of things.
Yeah, um, I also think we'll be, some of the science, technology, engineering, and math enhancements too. There'd be like a major space or enhanced opportunity for inquiry, learning, and some engineering. Uh, which, you know, again, I think we're probably underdeveloped right now at the elementary level and some of those things in relation to maybe superior district policy.
Is any of that potentially capital or would that ultimately be regulatory?
So the expenditure could be capital, would be included in capital. Um, the flexible seating, definitely. Um, the, what was the name of them?
White, whiteboard?
The whiteboards, yeah, that would fall into capital and technology. We do set aside a certain lot for technology.
Yeah.
We would just need to, you know, pass it out to their needs in that area. The S R grant, um, does have the new one. We did put a technology in that as well, so we have some room to do that stuff.
I just want to point out that, um, we are in need of a science program, um, but we really need to go through a process. You know, if, if funding came available, I'm, I'm not a performant, of, okay, let's just purchase the first thing out there. We really need to vet a program and that's really what next year is going to do. Um, so I, I just wanted to make that statement.
I think you can say that because, you know, the opposite of that is a ready-fire-aim approach. You know, that really, uh, I think it's the worst sort of thought, so I'm glad you're thinking about this in a very systematic fashion.
And the other thing I'm hopeful for, or I have support anyway, obviously I'm just one, but is the opportunity to peer-to-peer engage. So when you have your teacher teams, your leader teams, that they actually be able to attend conferences and work through some of this. I think often we kind of just, I don't want to say director or anything, but we put teachers in and we say they do this, but just experience so much, working around collaboratively learning, getting ideas on how to use some of it. So maybe when we do that, hopefully there's some opportunity to think about whether bringing training in or even better, getting peer-to-peer, um, somebody that's in the region that's doing it and they can, they can do some learning. I think, I know that there's always, oftentimes, a shortage of youth for that, but teachers are willing to do it. And I think it's great, but then have that chance to collaborate and have a, a peer and work on things. I don't know if that will be available, but I, I think that's great and we can include that.
Do you think one?
Uh, yeah, so I know a couple of structural questions. Just, I noticed that there's the kindergarten budget and then art seems to have kindergarten in it. Does that has kindergarten in it as well as, you know, K through five, please? So, is it art, phys ed, and music? It's K through five?
So are you talking of the specialists or what we have for specialists? We have, so kindergarten through fifth grade, all students for specialists have music, art, gym, P E, and, um, technology. Um, we also have, um, Spanish, which is a half an hour week through kindergarten through art. So the teachers have professional learning time together. It's where they, they get together and we work on things. Uh, this year, we had a focus on literacy footprints and small group instruction during that, that time. So is, did that answer your question? And then there's library time built into that PLT time.
Maybe it's just a new program overview to call it the K through five phys ed program. And art is a K through five program.
Actually, pre-K through fifth grade.
Well, that was my next question. I think you already mentioned pre-K in it all, so.
Pre-K does go to, um, P E.
Okay. Okay.
Pre-K falls, falls under my department.
Okay. I'm taking your time. So, so, so the kindergarten portion of the budget doesn't include the cost for phys ed or?
No.
That's all in the one through five?
Yes.
Okay, perfect.
So while the phys ed is in the phys ed budget, the library is in the library department budget. Grades one through five do not include those expenses.
That's quite.
Okay, okay, okay. Yeah, thank you. Now I see.
Okay, any other questions for Brenda?
And pre-K is under, yeah, so.
Thank you, Brenda.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Right, so I think that's a natural segue then into the student service budget. Uh, so we'll invite, um, Kim Dion to present that and I will share my screen. Um, so you have an opportunity for the viewers at home to see the presentation as well. Give me one moment, I'll share.
While we're seeing that, I do, we're allowing me to present. I know you have some questions about budget, so hopefully I can answer them.
Relax.
So student services is not only special education, but it's also 504, um, E L, and pre-K falls under my department.
And E L stands for English learners.
Yeah, correct. So then just a little bit of brief, brief background. Um, I'm not going to go into that, but again, it just details every, um, department that I oversee. So in the administration line, that's myself and my, um, admin assistant. You'll see an increase in P D conference travel and in service. Um, I'm anticipating that a lot of the P D is going to be going back to in-person. Therefore, the cost's going to go up. Either room, let's increase our P D, um, costs. So for example, I belong to the administrators of special education for Massachusetts. So we meet with, um, Russell Johnson, who is, um, I believe his title is Assistant Commissioner, um, for special education. So we meet with him, well, we've been meeting monthly with him, um, over Zoom. I'm anticipating we'll be meeting with him, um, in person, hopefully next year. Um, a lot of, like, most of the P Ds are, like I said, Zoom, so that's why that, that line item has increased. Uh, supplies has increased, again, copy paper. Uh, we have a color code system for our, uh, some of our folders. It's just easier to manage. It's actually, uh, when I came into this position, that's the system that they added. It's actually easier, um, for this color-coded system. And then postage, we actually decreased. Last year, we increased the budget. This year, we decreased it. And last year, we had increased it because, um, more things were being mailed out to families. Uh, our instructional, again, we're talking about contractual obligations for salaries. Um, we have salary increases for our related service providers. Contractual obligations, so we contract for our O T and P T services. And we actually contract with the B C B A also. And those services have, um, historically increased.
Maybe you could explain what a B C B A is?
So our B C B A is our behavioral consult, um.
It's a four-certified behavioral analyst. And so they work, I'm dealing with children on the autism spectrum, um, who need very direct interaction. Um, they need to do, uh, what we call discrete trials where they go on a scale, they get immediate reward. And so, um, it's this, you know, error-proof teaching, so it's a, a high degree of training. They need to be qualified to do that work.
And so we've also had a salary increase in the amount of, of support that we need. We've, uh, had two additional positions due to needs. Again, all of these are based on students' IEP and services that we are, uh, that we provide. Um, there's also been, again, a P D increase. Um, I increased that. Again, I, um, you know, I'm seeing that more and more people will probably be going in-person. Um, we've had a professional, um, instructional supplies and textbooks. Um, along with that P D increase, sorry, there's professional publications increase. So those are some of the resources that the staff, um, need. We have, um, a couple of programs that staff have requested that are helping our children. And that substantially, that increase, that subscription has increased. Um, and the instructional, um, supplies, again, those are just, um, line items that staff, um, are requesting. Those are some consumables that we use, um, for testing protocols for our school typologist, um, that we need. So this is our other district class. So these are, um, where our students who are placed out of district. Um, Lennox is not able to provide services for, um, these students. So we, um, we have less than 0.5% of our students that are out of district. Um, this also includes our students who are in the 18 to 22 program. And we will be contracting with Bar C C A R C to provide job coaching for some of our students. Um, they will also be, um, um, any day programs that our students may attend. So again, transportation is huge. That is, you know, a, a big portion of this increase is the cost of tran, uh, transportation. We only have two schools in this area, um, that really that our students can go to for out-of-district. So if, um, the out-of-district schools aren't suitable for students here, they would have to go further out towards where I live within, um, Camden County or other counties. So the transportation cost is huge. And then tuition increases. So D E C sets the rates for tuition for out-of-district schools. Those typically do not come out until September or October. Um, so that we will not see what the rate increases until September or October, um, this year, 22. Sorry. Sorry, um. So I, I just estimate five percent because I don't know what they're going to be. They can range anywhere between three percent to a five percent increase. And that, those are steps I guess. And those don't include sometimes, they don't include um, for example, one school will have it for like two hundred sixteen days. That's what the tuition's cost. So that is including summer programming. Some schools don't list summer programming. So we then have to pay additional if the, if the team feels that the student needs extended school year services. And it doesn't include OTPT or speech services. So then we have to then pay their contracted rate of what they pay for an OTPT or um, speech. So you'll see um, that our budget is up by six point nine four percent. Um, but that, that's, a lot of it is due to the out of districts, the transportation and the tuition costs. Other school services, so this is the 504's uh, department that I oversee. Um, we had to, we have a support salary, so we have the need to um, add support for a student. And I believe that was just a line item move. So that's why you'll see the huge increase of point uh, plus two hundred and eighteen percent. So we had to actually switch um, I, I believe it was from the Morris budget, we moved it over into the 504.
Yeah, that was just an accounting cleanup that just put you into the right spot.
And again, um, professional publications, society increases. So these are areas um, as far as like the PD needs. So I need, as the 504 district coordinator, um, I need to attend trainings. The 504, the guidance, um, our student adjustment counselor at um, Morris and our guidance counselor at LMMHS, attend the train, some of the trainings along with me. Um, I just actually signed up for a training um, in June and the cost is up close to eight hundred dollars. So um, that's something that I, I am required to um, attend in order to then um, train the staff. And then it's just a slight increase in supplies, again. And then our other school services, um, the ELL services. So we have two licensed ESL teachers. Um, we have, we currently now have twenty-one students um, whose primary native language is not English. Um, again, contractual ob- um, obligations, tutoring. That was, um, the ESAR grant is moved to ESAR in twenty twenty-two. Uh, PD travel, again, I'm anticipating that there may be more in-person. And then um, I know that one of the ESL teachers has asked for a curriculum for, I believe, grades three and four. So that will um, you'll see the increase there. Um, that's an actual decrease in the TEP and instructional supplies. They actually have decreased. Now, the, the good thing about the ELL services is that we do have a Title III grant um, that we contract with the Collaborative in Northampton who runs, basically runs the grant for us. Um, they get a small percentage of the grant. And it's, it's about twenty-three hundred, twenty-seven hundred, I believe. Um, and so we have to pay for the PD, the textbooks. And then once we get them in, once um, once we actually spend the money, we can then get reimbursed for it. So, but again, these are certain things that, you know, it may only, we may only be able to get three hundred dollars back reimbursed, or maybe only two hundred. So that they allocate certain percentages in this grant on what we can spend. So I can attend, um, you know, PD or the teachers. Um, Brendan can attend PD and we can get reimbursed for some of that. So you're going to see that those um, allocations, but some of that will come back to us once we've spent the money.
And also, twenty-one students that Kim referenced, two of those um, are new to the district and they are coming to us on tuition agreements with farming workers. We'll actually get revenue um, to offset the cost of it to give those two.
And so then this, just uh, for other school services, you'll see the ELL services are at eighty-six percent, 504 is at fourteen percent. Other school services, again, it's at sixteen point six five, but remember the 504, we had that line change. That's it, yeah, that's enough.
Good.
Anybody has any questions?
Questions for Kim Dion?
I guess, so, oh, wait. Uh, I, I just, I guess it's a broad question, but the, I mean, the overall spending on student services is obviously going up fairly quickly last year and again this year, sort of the seven percent range. Um, and I, I guess I'm concerned that it's crowding out other places we could be spending. Uh, you know, we're, we are increasing our uh, special education budget, I think more than we're increasing either the Morris or LMHS. Uh, and so I guess I understand that some of these are just mandated costs that we don't have any control over. But there are also a lot of costs that we do have control over. And so I guess I sort of want to get your thoughts. If, if we wanted to keep growing special education funding more in line with growth elsewhere, um, where would be the places that we have some flexibility in how much of our resources we allocate here?
Quite honestly, I don't see it. Um, because as you know, we are mandated um, to provide services for our students with disabilities. Um, we have to make sure that they're given a free and appropriate public education. Um, so as a team, when we're meeting as a team, um, we have to decide what services are appropriate for, for our students. And Lennox is lucky um, in that, I would say, um, I actually have some of the figures here from the state. Um, that our, our, our department has that approximately seventy-four percent of our students are in full inclusion, which is, is, is what we want. And then in order to do that, um, the team recognizes what services are needed and we provide the support for our students so that they can get those services. Um, we have students who have come in as move-ins, school choice. Um, so districts that they come from write IEPs and we have to follow those until we, we have a meeting. And quite honestly, with those um, students, I haven't seen where the services that were in other plans coming into us where they weren't not appropriate. So, you know, our, our team looks at everything, we collect data to see both types of services. So these are services that we are, you know, we are mandated to, um, allocated to provide. So for example, um, our out of districts, that's where you're going to see a lot of, a lot of the expenditures.
Yeah, no, yeah, that, that certainly makes it.
And, and a lot of, you know, I mean, could I do without, you know, a couple of hundred dollars for supplies? I mean, you know, we have our two forty grant, we have our two sixty-two grant and I'll, let me just share something with you, just because I wrote it down. Um, so our two forty grant this year, we got two hu- around two hundred and fifty-one thousand, of which about twelve thousand, close to thirteen thousand, um, was taken out for what they call proportionate share. So for any private school or homeschool students, we have to allocate a portion of, of our grant for those services for um, any, any child that attends Montessori or any homeschool student. So even if we have a student who lives in the league, but goes to a private school here because um, they get federal funds, we have to then support them. So you're looking at, you know, two hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars and then subtract thirteen from that and then that's, that's what we're allocated.
No, and, and I'm sorry, I, I didn't mean to suggest, we sort of need to look at, at two hundred dollar supply categories. I'm looking at the, you know, one point seven million for our in-house personnel, which I guess is going from about thirty-three to thirty-five FTEs this year. And so I guess what I'd be wondering is, you know, of the thirty-five FTEs, how many of those are mandated by IEPs?
Well, again, it's about, it's, it's about the services. So what are we providing, what are we providing for services? Um, quite, you know, if you look at, if you look at um, my, my portion here, I would love to have an actual, an additional teacher at the middle school so that we can ha- we can have a teacher for sixth, seventh and eighth grade and can actually co-teach with or, or, you know, one sixth grade's um, special ed teacher for sixth grade, one special ed. Because now we have two and it, and it's really hard, um, I think, to divide those two teachers up between three grade levels. So if anything, I mean, you'll see where I have, you know, my long-range goals are, are to do that. Um, we, you know, we have two pre-K students, so that's in the, in there too. I mean, two great, great teachers are. Um, and some of our, our teachers, we have four teachers who are considered team leaders who run the IEP meetings, the initials, and, and uh, three years, but they do a lot of the paperwork, they'll check the IEPs, they do the invites. So that takes them away from classroom instruction. Um, again, that's another thing that I would love to see in the future is to have one, one person for the whole district so that it brings those teachers back into the classrooms to provide the support for those kids, those students.
And so just last question is, so there is this increase of two positions. If we didn't add two positions, if we still were at about thirty-three FTEs in the coming year, would we be able to fulfill all our legal commitments?
No, those two, the two full-time that you're talking that we increased?
Yes.
Right, so those were support, those were our pair professionals and, and those were based on the needs of the student.
But do we have existing pair professionals in the system who could, with those needs?
No.
So we, okay.
So the, those, those two students um, have come from, have either come from another district as a movement um, and um, just based on their about getting any, any details, yes.
Okay.
Is there any opportunity to look at out of district placements and do you have enough kids with similar needs that would make sense to maybe an in-house program? Um, maybe low incidence kids or something like that?
Right, so, so that's always, that's always on the minds of special ed directors, um, is to create in-house programs. When you only have one or two students, it's hard to create a cohort because then you have to start thinking about the transitions. Um, I definitely see the possibility of creating something, well, um, right now, the answer would be no because of, of the age span. Um, so one of the other things that you have to think about is the age span. So um, the Department of Ed will come in, when they come into the tier focus model during this, uh, in a couple of weeks, is that they look at your age span. So you can't have a group of um, special ed students in a self-contained room with more than uh, four years of an age span. Otherwise, you have to apply for a waiver. So that's another thing that you have to move that. But yes, it, it would be. And that's something um, that we are trying to work with other districts on. And we do, we actually have, one of our students is actually tuitioned to um, another area of school district. So that, that is great, but a lot of the districts are full, that, you know, their, their programs are full. Um, but I am in talks, I, I belong to a um, group, uh, Berkshire Special Ed Directors and we're always in talks about, do you have any openings? Um, we did have a student who tuitioned in for our eighteen to twenty-two-year-old program. Uh, we just hired a new transition program teacher this year. Um, she's doing an amazing job. Um, and I'm actually looking to have her create a program. So yes, maybe we can start tuitioning in some students, but it's going to take a little bit. Um, because transition, um, again, is, you know, we have our students, we can have them till the age of twenty-two. So um, she's working, she'll be working with um, the middle school and helping the students because once they turn fourteen, we have to start thinking about transition. So she's going to be working with that. So yes, it's definitely something that we'd like to look at. Uh, but with one or two, I don't know if that is very, very productive, seeing that then you, as you move along.
Can I pick up on that for a second? I wanted to, that was, that was sort of longer down a minutes to, to comment on, um, uh, and, and it, it's sort of tied into perhaps high transportation costs and, and, and your comment in your, in your presentation earlier regarding perhaps some of the nearest places, being Springfield and, and, and uh, and pass the I ninety-one corridor. Uh, it just makes me think of um, other, and you had mentioned other districts, getting in touch with the special ed directors. It just makes me think in, in, along the lines of, um, you know, we've got our kids here. We, we've got other districts that must be in a similar situation. And, and it makes me think of, of, is there, you know, any way to put together a cooperative so that we can offer a sort of a, uh, and, and maybe it can't be across the board, I, I took that age-wise because I'm kind of sensitive of those challenges. Um, however, um, you know, something along the line of, of, of a therapeutic program for these kids who were dead to birth ear- earlier to help even mitigate some of those transportation stresses.
Yes, yes. I mean, I know that like, um, Pittsfield, for example, does have some programs. However, when I reached out to them, they were full and they didn't have any, any openings. Um, you know, and, and something that I forgot to mention is that we, we were hoping that we could have a bus driver slash van driver to, you know, transport some of our students and maybe look at that. But we have not been successful with finding a van or a bus driver. So that's another reason why some of our costs have gone up. Um, so just a plug out there, if anybody's interested in getting their CDL or their class seventy, I did actually, which, so you know, in case we did have a driver and there ever was an emergency, feel free to contact me or Melissa and we'll, we'll get you going. Um, because that, that's huge. That, like you said, that's huge.
Yeah, I mean, I think I'm thinking of it in a different way though. Uh, I, I'm thinking of it as the districts feed into
Mm-hmm.
a, a, a unique place.
Like a collaborative, like almost like a collaborative, yes.
That could probably be the right term. Um, where we're not looking for place, you know, space, but we're saying, you know, hey, Southern, you know, wherever. Where, you know, can, what, what can we create?
Mm-hmm.
To um,
No, it, and it's true because it's definitely, um, there, the resources out here are not as great as they are, you know, where I live, right? In Chippewa, so in that area. Um, but even, even something, and it's not simple, but even something like the college community, right? And I always get this acronym because it changed. And so I remember it as ICE. So it's inclusive concurrent enrollment. So we had students at HCC, we had students at um, UMass, Westfield State, they have a great program. And when I inquired about that for some of our eighteen, twenty-two-year-olds, there's nothing up this way. So it's a great program for all of our students and I was wondering, how can we get that here? How can we get Richard Community College? Because that would be ideal for some of our, our students um, to be in those programs. So this is all thanks that, yes, it, it's definitely a work in progress and it's just trying to find how we can get that going.
And can I just make a comment? And, and I mean, I understand that perhaps the, it's related to, to you or enough saying, well, the percentages of this budget increases of a percentage of that budget, could we move that money? But when you're talking about students who need special services, they're not there because they're, they're, they're not having the spaces, services they really need. And when you, when your parent that goes through a situation where your child is not um, thriving or not even really learning in the existing setting that was created for that child, I, I'm going to get a little emotional about it because the thought that we could compare, well, the percentage of the money for this to that, when there's a child that was not functioning in school because something is amiss. And when you go through that process of being like, what's happening here? And I've been through that and you identified 504s in your budget and I almost wanted to ask a question about why you mentioned that it's unfunded mandates because I get that. But most of our federal government doesn't pay. almost wanted to ask a question about why you mentioned that it's unfunded mandates, because I get that, but most of our federal government doesn't pay, okay, pay a tiny portion of any of our education. So it's all an unfunded mandate, so let's just let that go. But our, our, both our legal and our moral mandate is to educate kids, and we use faith, and that's one of our wonderful alphabet suits. But our moral and legal mandate is to educate kids so that they can thrive and live in the world. And if one child takes a few more staff members to get them to a place where they can thrive in the world, then that's our mandate. And if another child, and, and we see so much wonderful work of students at the middle and high school who are very highly functioning, working with their peers, and there's a lot of programming that has no budget line that talks about how do we act as a community. I mean, my daughter did an internship in what used to be called Room Seventeen, and I know we've changed the way we did that, but the reality was she had the opportunity as an internship to learn and work with students with some of our higher disabilities, Down syndrome and other identifiers, and learned so much and created an opportunity for her as a student to give back and work in a community. So we, 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 we're not comparing apples to oranges, and when it comes to student services, I feel like sometimes we're actually underdoing what we need to do, because students need tutoring to get, you know, maybe it's the scaffolding. If we really look at the way students learn, we want them to fit into all of these categories, but they don't. They're human beings, and they learn in a way that they learn, and sometimes it's a, it's a getting over the hump at third grade or fifth grade or in sixth grade is a really tough one for some kids. But you put those supports in and you create that scaffolding, and then sometimes you suddenly see a ninth grader who doesn't need any of that. So the payback isn't dollars, but it's human beings who are functioning and feeling like they're part of a community. And opportunities for staff to not feel frustrated because they're old and fifteen, or, or nurses, and they know they're not actually meeting the needs of that student. There's nothing more wonderful than seeing a child who really struggled come to a place where they're not quite struggling anymore, and that takes talent and time and training and energy and care, and, and it, 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 it takes more when a student needs more, and that's just the way it is. And we could say, well, these students are really, they have a great time, they're good, they're top of their notch, let's, you know, uh, let's take, you know, the reality is, we're just trying to take each student for who they are and what they're able to do. And, and I think when we can do that, that's what we're here for.
And, and just to piggyback on that, you know, one of the costs, um, like I said, was the BARC, the B-C-A-R-C, um, for our older students, and that, what that's gonna do is provide job coaching. So we have one student now who has worked at Maribor. Um, and, and he will now be working, um, at, what did I say, Price, Price Shaver? That's what it is, not, March, Market? Market, Market. Okay, I, I'm like, see, I'm thinking back on what all these, these grocery stores are. I think Shop, right, I'm thinking all those things, I'm sorry. Um, and so that, so he'll be able to go into there with him, and, you know, they'll be able to provide services, job coaching while they're there, and then, you know, look at, okay, well, this is what you're doing, this is what you, what you need to do. Um, so those are some really good services, and you know, can school, some school districts are, you know, they have, um, staff that can go there. So when you have a student who attends um, Westfield State, um, in their ICE program, and I'll, I'll get the acronym, acronym correct sometime. Um, they actually have coaches, educational coaches, who will go with them and sit with them in class and take, take notes for them, they'll go to, you know, they're, they'll help them find a job on campus and take them for like recreational, so those are the types of services that, you know, we're looking to increase, um, and so by doing this, this is the calculations.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I did, um, so are you, you're in the midst of the tier focus policy?
Correct, they'll be here, um, the week of February fourteenth for, um, special ed and, um, civil rights, and the week of March seventh, the EL, um, O, OSM, uh, will be here.
So that, I, I have a self-assessment portion of the person.
Uh, so I completed the self-assessment, so they'll be coming in, um, for the tiered focus monitoring for the special ed and the, um, civil rights, they'll be coming in on the sixteenth for in-person review of the files, and then they'll interview, um, staff, myself, and Mark on the seventeenth. And then they'll give us their findings and, I just.
So no identified targeted student standards or anything?
Not yet, no.
Do, as I recall, it used to be an opportunity for parents to give feedback at some point.
So they sent, um, they, we've had the, yes, we had a, um, open forum last Wednesday, I believe it was, last Wednesday, um, so they had a Zoom, with a Zoom orientation for parents. They said they did send out, um, evaluations or, um, forgot exactly the term that they used, they sent those out already. And, um, they will have a, an interview with the CPAC president, um, I believe on the fourteenth. So, so parents should have received something from them, if not, contact me and I will give you, um, the name of, um, Elena Pomer, I believe is her, is the person that's coming out.
And what parents does that go to?
I'm sorry.
Which parents does that go to?
Any students, um, so we gave her a list of students, um, on IEPs along any contact information.
So if students are in a five oh four or ELL, or students are not identified as needing services, there's not a point of contact for, for that, it's only students that are identified, families who have students who are identified as having services.
Well, five oh four is civil rights.
Yes, but they've only asked for the students with, on IEPs, to contact the, um, roster for them. The, they did ask for a roster for the EL students, and that is March seventh. So it's, it'll be two separate reviews. That has a, that just kind of, I think, somehow, some way, we might have that forgotten a little bit. So they're coming in really quick, whereas with the, the special ed, it's, yeah. Two different departments.
And if, just for the, you know, viewers at home and everyone else, um, one of the funny things about special education, too, you do get reimbursement from the state through this mechanism called Circuit Breaker, which is, um, letting you have money for, uh, accelerating costs, um, you know, often beyond the normal special education cost. Those are calculated in the current year and you get them the following year, so in one sense, you're always kind of, um, a year behind in terms of receiving the money that you truly need to meet your needs, so you can have to borrow, you know, um, against the future in order to pay special ed costs. Um. I mean, it's great to get the reimbursement, don't get me wrong, but it just, that setup is not always the, uh, most easy for folks to kind of see, um, you know, how the circuit breaker gets applied.
And, and again, with Circuit Breaker, you don't get the full reimbursement, so, you know, I, I just wrote down some, some figures, so we, our expenditures that we were able to claim were, were about three hundred thousand dollars. But after the foundation budget, about, of the foundation piece, we could only claim sixty-eight thousand of that. And out of sixty-eight thousand, we were only able to claim seventy-five percent of that, so we only got, not only, because the year before we got thirty-nine, so we got an increase, um, but we got fifty-one thousand dollars back. So out of the three hundred and one services that we claimed, we got fifty-one thousand for Circuit Breaker. So you know, it, hopefully this year, we're gonna be getting more, because um, they're now adding on the transportation that we can get reimbursed for transportation, so we're hoping that they're gonna increase what we, what we are allowed to, um, uh, get reimbursed for transportation.
Or at least increase their percentage that they reimburse us.
Right.
It, it hovers around sixty percent. And it all depends on the, the finances that the, coming up.
Any other questions?
I, I just have two quick questions, and, and I'm sorry, I need to. So, uh, I, I noticed, uh, one of the highlights was, um, that you have a full-time school adjustment counselor, uh,
Yes, uh, yes, uh, in the spring, right, spring of twenty twenty, I believe, we hired, just before we went down, uh, we went into the pandemic, um, we hired, um, a full-time school adjustment counselor.
A- a- any opportunity to, to, to expand or fill in? Um, my understanding is, there's not someone there every day in Morris for school adjustment counselor. Is, is, and I, and I think that's very, is there any opportunity to expand, to fill in those gaps at all?
Honestly, I don't, I don't know. Um, I, I don't know. I know that they were looking to hire a, um, another full-time adjustment counselor for LMMHS. Um, I don't know, perhaps, perhaps down the road, that, that if there wasn't a retirement, maybe we would look into requesting the, it be a full-time decision.
And, and my, my last question, I promise, is that, I, I know in the past that there have been facilities constraints for special ed students there at Morris, um. And there's been lack of suitable and appropriate spaces for children to take breaks, um, and, and whatnot. Uh, and, and I wondered, um, if, if, if that still exists, and if that really should be something we should be talking about in this budget. You know, being able to provide or figure out how we can provide appropriate, um,
Breaks.
And break, uh, spaces, facilities.
Breaks, yes. So the, the spaces that we use, um, is we have the OT and the PT room, relocated the room. Um, so there is actually a space there, and PT and OT are, are typically not there on certain days of the week. Um, so sometimes that room is, is empty, but we do share, they do share it with, um, another department. Um, but for the most part, that is the room that they now use. So it is, there is a room there for them to use, um, on a ground level.
I have one quick question, um, does the, the work ever overlap between the guidance counselor and the school adjustment counselor? And is that person's full-time as well?
So the school adjustment counselor, um, at Morris is responsible for the five oh fours.
Okay.
Um, and for the most part, she, um, is the one that attends our meetings, our special ed meetings. Um, so, so she's kind of the special ed portion side of it, um, versus, um, the guidance counselor.
It doesn't overlap in the sense that it, the guidance counselor is out. At Bill and.
So. And, and I know this was asked previously, so the distinction between the guidance counselor and the school adjustment counselor, um, here, uh, in one, it's, I'm, I'm not really sure where that came from, because it was before my time, but I can tell you the guidance counselor, um, at Morris, um, her job, the majority of the day, acts as a school adjustment counselor. If that answers your question. And that was the request for her to go full-time next year, when we're using part of the ESAR money.
Right, but there's two separate.
Yes, two separate people we're talking about. Um, they're, they're both point eights right now.
They both are, okay, thank you, yep.
And they both work, um, there's one day that someone is always there.
Yes. Okay.
So even with the, the one day that each may be out, the other one is there.
Thank you.
And the proposal is for, for the guidance to be full-time?
One person, yeah.
Yeah.
And our school adjustment counselor also, um, services, um, pre-K too, so she's.
Okay. Moving on?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so our next budget to take a look at is our central administration budget, so I'll share my screen again, so we can walk through that presentation. And so our central administration budget, um, we see a increase in school committee expenses, um, largely due to, um, a contract that we are entering to with, uh, MASC, the National Association of School Committees, to do a policy review, to update our policy manual, make sure that we're compliant with the law, and, um, helping to make sure that, um, all the, um, latest, um, national laws are reflected in our policies, um, and that'll help us, um, I think, clean up and, um, improve our overall operations in the district, so uh, this is something that is a, a three-year project, and so, um, each year we'll get, uh, a piece of that cost of, uh, approximately seven thousand dollars per year for the next three years. Um, additionally, there is a increase in the rates for, um, liability insurance, and so that's reflected there. Um, and then, like we did with the rest of the budget, um, we did take a look at, um, all the other lines based on actual expenditures, um, you know, being zero-based and being very lean is very important to us, and so we didn't want to just park money in lines, because as we've historically done, we went back and did that five-year look back, I asked Melissa to go through line by line, and, and get real with the numbers, so that, uh, you know, we were giving her a lean budget, um, and removing uh, as much of that extra spending that we could.
Um, from the superintendent's office, um, some of the, what's, um, what's reflected here are contractual, uh, increases, uh, due to salary agreements for folks that, um, work out of our office. Um, we do see a reduction in, a decrease in tuition that, um, we all have to use, so the, I'm happy to have that back in the coffers. Um, again, we're also looking to increase our, our payroll services to get that, patch the actual expenses, so sometimes we were able to save all the time, we'd back that look back and saw that we were under-budgeting, so uh, that's a little bit of cleanup there. Um, the next one is not as maybe clear as, um, possibly be, but this is increasing share of the data line. Um, that's our internet services, and so we do share that, um, it's more departments of town, so all costs is, um, reflected there, um, that's increasing. Um, additionally, um, advertising rates, um, cost us more than maybe we've historically budgeted for, um, we did a look back on the actual spending, um, and a lot of that's around posting of jobs, um, so uh, those costs are increasing, um, as well. Um, on the, the plus side for us in terms of saving money, um, by doing that close scrutiny of our lines, we're also able to, um, see that we can save some money in, uh, actual costs of pre-teen, postage, uh, conference, uh, travel, uh, over time as well, so we've tried to tighten that up, uh, accordingly. Um, we talked about the, the bus contract last meeting, and so transportation services, um, do come down with a, um, an increase to us. Uh, again, in one way, we're saving some money because we have a decreased need for, um, a driver, um, but then offset by an increase in the, the base rates that we have, uh, as well. So in order to, um, mitigate that cost and soften the blow, uh, we are looking to use, um, two and a half percent, um, from ESAR, or we used two and a half from last year, uh, so we're seeing, I think, an increase, uh, as we move forward, um, because we're kind of at the end of that, uh, I would say cliff, but we want to make sure that, being honest about what those nights are, we don't want to um, overly rely on ESAR to balance the books without thinking about the future implications. So we're trying, I think, everywhere we can to say, you know, once ESAR is no longer done, or we borrowed from ESAR last year to kind of balance the books, um, so we want to be honest about the true costs, uh, without that subsidy, because that subsidy is not going to live on uh, in perpetu- in perpetuity, so we want to be sure that, uh, we're being honest about that. So we see an overall variance, uh, an increase of, um, four and a half percent. Um, again, largely driven by, um, those costs that we identified in the previous slides. We look at the overall cost of, um, where administration cost goes, sixty-two percent of those go to administration. Um, thirty-three percent does go to transportation, uh, as we have discussed, it is a large cost. I think that we are lucky in a sense that we were able to negotiate a pretty decent, uh, transportation contract, and we know a lot of the pain of others, uh. But again, that, that tends to be, uh, very expensive, but still far cheaper than owning your own bus fleet, and mechanics, and garages, and, you know, routers and dispatchers, and all of those types of things, so uh, you know, I think it's still a good way to look at transportation. Uh, and then probably some of that spending goes to, uh, to you all, and some things that, uh, help you, um, to, to your job is, uh, whether that's policy review or, um, maybe it's PD money, uh, so the small hole, uh, portion goes to school.
All right, do you mind if I interject at this point, because it's about this portion and not about the maintenance, which is next? So I think it's really good in the school committee that we, you know, have cleaned up things that we haven't spent. I, I'm a little encouraged, you know, when some of us are new, some of us are new and not new. You know, I did attend the MASC conference, and some people have never paid, it's about whether it's valuable, I felt this year particularly was extremely valuable. And so that was me attending that conference. I actually realized and it's okay, I didn't submit for hotel transportation, et cetera. But again, I think it's important to people that can work that into their life, if you're interested, and I'm happy to share, that we have some flexibility. You know, we can be very isolated up here in the Berchers, especially and even in Lennox, as to what other districts are doing. And I think we hear from other leaders in education, either whether through integrating processes or through superintendents. And when you get outside of the Berchers, what, whatever people are doing, and I just think it's, it's once a year, it's a very well-prepared conference. We get a better sense of legislation upcoming, we get a better sense of connection with leadership and other people that are doing the work that we're doing. So I think it's good, but I also hope that we have some flexibility that people say, I really want to go to that conference. It's typically the first weekend, we can, like it overlaps a couple of days at the end of the week, the first weekend of ever. Then I really am encouraged to know that hotels are good, but it's still bad, it's fine. But it's, it really is a good opportunity and I've attended a couple of times. Sometimes it's very kind of wonky and regulatory and other times, like the most recent time, it's much more focusing on sort of the energy and the inspiration on education and what people are trying to do to make our schools better and do a better job. And I think that's important because we do sometimes get leads of this kind of stuff and it's good to look up in how, in my opinion. So I hope we'll still have flexibility to be able to do that. It's not, it's not expensive conference at all.
No, and if you do sign up early enough, there is a discount. So I didn't increase that line. I'm thinking that more would go because we didn't have you go last year. And you talked about how wonderful and how much you got from it. So I did increase that line a little bit.
Any other questions?
I don't know, I don't know if this is in any budget, but I guess it's a question for you, so I'll throw it in here.
Sure.
You know, there's always been a lot of talk all year about DEI-related initiatives, trainings, curriculum review, et cetera. It doesn't actually show up as far as I can find it where in the budget. So I'm just curious if it is some, if it is in there somewhere or if it's more still up the discussion phase and something maybe spending on further down the road?
Well, I see, you're trying to, what you're handing in some?
The ESSER grant does allow for uses like that. So we do have $25,000 set aside for professional development for DEI and another 25 for social, emotional climate.
Okay. And is that part of, in terms of final decision on how we spend that, that's presumably not part of our budget process? When is the discussion about that?
So I think that's an evolving discussion that's being built out of our TLC committee, of the school committee, and building out a multi-year plan for what that training will look like. So we're still in kind of the initial talks about building that out. In my update to you this week, I will share the Ready, R-E-T-I, racial equity, diversity, inclusion blueprint that was put out by the Massachusetts Association of Schools of Attendants in coordination with ESSC and MASC. So you'll have a chance to kind of see what they're looking at at the state level and what they're asking districts to take on. And that will also inform, I think, a lot of our student-making so that, you know, we are meeting what is being asked of us, of all of us across the state by our state department of education. The other piece in terms of, you also asked about curriculum, is that in the overall salary increases, we do have $12,000 put aside as a stipend for a curriculum coordinator to, again, help spearhead the work that we need to do curricular-wise, but they're kind of rolling into a little bit of some of the science work. But we do need to do a K to 12 curriculum alignment, both vertically and horizontally in order to get our accreditation from the head. And so we want to make sure that we have somebody working on that project so that we get that.
Got it. So that's not a DEI audit of the curriculum, that's the NIAS?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, I'm going to share my screen again and Melissa's going to present the Maintenance and Operations Budget. So just give me one moment while I screen share. Melissa, I'll take your cue as someone who has access lines.
Okay. We can advance.
All right.
So this is the Maintenance and Operations Budget and it encompasses our buildings, the custodial services that we require to maintain our buildings, utilities, our grounds, equipment, all of those things that we need to operate school buildings. The custodial services line is really the area that has all the salaries for the custodians, which includes at LMH S, there's 5.5 custodians, one is a head custodian that basically is the point person for all that happens at that building, project-wise and otherwise. And then at Morris, there's four total custodians. One is a head custodian, same responsibilities as at LMH S, where they're the building, the, you know, the person that we go to for any issues at the building or in that sphere has any projects that are going on. So you'll see that there is an increase in salary because of contractual obligations in that department. And there is an increase in supplies. So custodial supplies would be, you know, garbage bags for the building, supplies for the scrubber, things of that nature, that just to clean the building and otherwise, you know, non, not exciting stuff, necessary stuff. And we did move some of that into ESSER for custodial supplies last year. So that's where you're going to a jump back up of 6,400 for the most part due to the loans that were moved over to ESSER. So the biggest part of this budget is the building maintenance. And responsibility-wise, you know, this encompasses all of the parts of the building, the HVAC, the boilers, the doors and windows, anything environmental which we know has been going on, ongoing at, maybe in high school, but it lasted here. Pest control projects like roofs on the generator and any supplies. That's the building maintenance budget. And there is an increase of 31,355. And again, if you look at these numbers, we're moving one back from the ESSER grant that we have moved out this, for this year's budget. So subs have been moved back in. And depending on whether or not they're used because of, you know, the pandemic, if we need more staff on because there has to be more cleaning, we can still apply some of that funding to the ESSER grants, but we have, there has historically been money in the operating for subs in this line and it is used, we do use it. Contracted services, the majority of the 15,544 that was moved into SRA is HVAC work. Now, we have regular typical maintenance of the HVAC and boilers and there is a bit of an increase in this one just to make sure that we keep those systems operating as they are. We spent a lot of time and funding to get them to a point where they were able to operate those buildings and those buildings efficiently for air quality and heating purposes. We want to maintain it now. There's an environmental contracted services line that is new in this year's budget and that is, EcoGenesis is now contracted with us as the designated person for our building. So what that is, is when you have asbestos in a building, you do have to have a designated person who monitors the asbestos, who keeps all of the records, who does the training with the staff. That was done in-house. EcoGenesis is now going to be doing it for us, at least for the foreseeable future. And that also would include any work if we needed to have any, if we had a small event or an event that we would need to contract out for. Pest control, like I said, it's, it's an increase of a thousand. We did have some issues at Morris and there were no, there was no budgeted money. So I want to make sure that we're covered there. And that's really it. But that, the majority of it is money moved from, that was funded in ESSER for this budget that has been moved back into the operating.
And the pest weren't ending really in the period, it's just some bees on the paper.
There was bees, yeah. So this is, the equipment budget encompasses anything like, you know, a floor scrubber, a snow blower, things like that, that would require maintenance and/or additional, you know, supplies to operate it. But the majority of this is the maintenance for the vehicle. The custodial department has a van. They also do our inter-office mailworm every day. So that van is used for that and used for moving equipment around. You know, if we had to bring something over that could fit in the van over to Morris, it could, they could put it in there. So it's, the van is 2012, it's 10 years old, it only has 45,000 miles on it. But it has required a bit more maintenance over the last couple of years and that's where you're seeing that increase request. The next part of the, the maintenance and operations is the grounds and we do have subs again there. Typically, these are used if we can't schedule a custodian to also help with the grounds during the day. So when you have just one day custodian, LMH S has two. During the spring, when the grounds need attention, one goes out, one stays in. Morris doesn't have that. They have one during the day. And so sometimes we need to have a sub come in to, to assist with getting this stuff done so that our grounds look, look presentable and are, are good enough for the kids to play on. Supplies and equipment, our five-year average was $9,408. The 2023 budget is at $12,175. We do have some older machinery that the custodians have requested a little bit in their, in their maintenance budget for. And contracted services all remain level at this, in this department area, program area. So this is a graph that shows you where the money for maintenance operation, maintenance and operation goes. 61% custodial. That again is the staff, the custodial staff, rubbish removal at the building and custodial supplies. The building's maintenance is 9% of it, utilities are 26% of it, and the equipment is 4%. Now utilities, the, the town does go out to bid for the utility rates every three years. So we're able to see where we don't see, you see Berkshire gas prices going crazy. We don't necessarily see that impact because we have three-year contracts. Now, we are going out again this year, but we're anticipating, I do have a slight increase in utilities, but I think we have a good base for what we'll spend next year plus a little bit of an increase. I know that the town is looking at a 5% increase, we're just under that. So the total budget for maintenance operations is 22. It was 1.039 million, this year is 1.086. There is a $46,000 or 4.48%. And then one more slide, I think. Oh yeah, I like this card. This graph shows you, the purple is 2022, the black is 2023. So even though some of these percentages, and I think this helps to see, some of these percentages in small budgets really look like they're very, very high. But when you look at it in this comparison, you don't really see a huge jump in any one of these department areas.
Okay, so I had a question regarding the EcoGenesis. So is that the AHERA, are they now our asbestos hazard emergency, whatever they are in the HCM board?
Yes.
Is AHERA?
So the AHERA booklet is still going to be kept here in district. There is one at LMH S and I have copies of some of the main booklet is at LMH S. And they will be, they provide the paperwork and Jeff is still putting it in the booklet and keeping the booklet, but they're doing all of that.
Okay.
And there's no conflict of interest in that?
No, it's a, it's a separate contract. The, the air quality testing that they do is after an event or if we ask them to come. This is just the, the record-keeping and they always did do the walkthrough of the building even prior to this. They'll be doing that as well. But this is record-keeping and training of staff.
We, we had a year or two ago given our lead custodian the responsibility of doing it. He'd been doing the AHERA paperwork for years and it was getting to be pretty intense. And it was only a year or so, but we actually gave him a small stipend. We're doing it without that. And I don't have any idea what that was, but I was going to ask, under the Maintenance and Operations Budget, you had $2,500 of new money for services and support. And I wasn't sure. Maybe you had, you had two line items that each had $2,500, a little one of it.
On the presentation or the?
Well, on the, no, on the massive mega booklet, the hundred-s somewhat-page booklet. It was under, it was under, I can't remember why I figured out. Over, over the Maintenance and Operations, it was on the one, two, three, the fourth page of the spreadsheet, right at the top. And initially I thought that must have been the money for.
Can you tell me what the department is, custodial?
It's Building Ma, Program Building Maintenance Department 67.
67, okay.
Is that, is that the big one page here?
You know, hang on, we're on 129.
So the services and support are the, those are substitute loans.
Okay.
So that would be?
That was the $5,000 that you had, yeah. I didn't want you to think I was reading the budget.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Just when you can't sleep, that's when you think about it.
So.
Can't say there's anything missing, it's all there.
So I guess a question I have, and it doesn't have to happen tonight, but do you have a sense of how much money that was in ESSER is coming back into this budget? And we don't have five, whatever the percent is that we're, overall budget's going up. Just wondering like, if maybe by the end of next week or something, or at some point, you could let us know how much money is kind of coming back from ESSER to this budget?
Yeah, I, you know, we had taken $123,000 out of the budget last year and moved it to ESSER. It's not that full amount, but I will give you.
Yeah, yeah, just says because, you know, I know that ultimately we want to have it in the operating budget. And it's appropriate to be in the operating budget. I'm just wondering like what the order of magnitude was of that.
I can, I can have that for it.
Because typically the net result of that is money that goes back into the, the general fund for the town if we have savings from grants or other things that, unanticipated investments, et cetera, right?
So, so grants would not go to the town. A lot of the grants that we receive are multi-year grants, so they stay with the school department. But if it's in the general fund, the operating budget.
Yeah.
And anything there in this budget that you see now, that is not expended out of a grant, would go back to the town if we did not spend it during the course of a year. Now, in any given year, you can, you can spend the whole budget depending on the sort of year that you have. And in other years, and probably in most years, you have, you have a percentage that is, that does go back to the town because you can't possibly budget to the penny on every line item. And you can have a budget that you feel is solid and the day it's voted on by the town, the next day something changes.
Right.
So you, you never know. But you have to be prepared for what you don't know and you think it's coming.
And in particular, the ESSER funding, it's not concrete yet, how much is going to be available for next year? And what we'll be able to spend, is that, is that what you've been telling us?
No, the ESSER, the ESSER grant, there were three ESSER grants. The third ESSER grant is available and we did receive our first payment. And it's budgeted for some of the items that we talked about, the professional development, some improvements to both buildings. The permanent substitutes that we've been able to put into one building, at least for now. We're looking to amend it so that we can get that additional school adjustment counselor at the middle and high school. So we do have the third, and I. Um, so we do have the third, and I believe probably the final grant for the pandemic. Yes. So that would be available to us. It began this year, which is fiscal year twenty-two. We would have that until the end of twenty-four, possibly September of twenty-five, I think it may end. So it's here for a few years.
Yeah, but it comes with lots of strings, right? So you can only use it for COVID-related expenses and/or things you didn't do because of COVID, right? So, which can be a stretch, you, you know, it depends on, you know, um, obviously we're not in the game of like, you know, being, you know, untrueful, but like if we said, hey, we need to put off painting, we can get a painter in because we weren't in Rangers due to COVID, then we could use it that way, so. Um, but the auditors are very, um, tough around this, especially on Esser three. Uh, with each wave of Esser, the, um, the restrictions got tighter and the uh, audit, you know, that you face became greater as well. So, um, you know, all this is spending and content with the money for the other Esser pieces, and um, again, they're, they're very strict, you know, um, and very good if you get looking through some of the thinly veiled things that districts have tried to pass off. Um, so again, you know, if you don't play games, you don't, you know, wanna, you know, get into that kind of thing. So, uh, we'll be strategic with the use of that, but you know, I'm gonna be honest, it's a forthright.
Were there any other questions for Alyssa or Mark relative to these last two questions? Here we go, why don't we move on?
Uh-huh.
So the, um, next item, I mean, currently lived either in support or in new business, but it was requested by the committee, um, to have some space, have a discussion about, um, COVID protocols and, um, and an update on that. Um, so I guess I'll, you know, kind of leave the conversation with, um, just sharing that, e- everyone knows this, that, um, DESI has changed, um, some of the protocols in testing, um. They call the at-home antigen testing, and we did, um, opt into that program. Uh, we had a lot of interest from our, uh, families and our staff to, uh, take advantage of this program. Which basically adds a second round of, um, of weekly testing in addition to the, um, PCR test that we do Tuesdays. Each Friday now we'll do an at-home test, and, and then folks would send us their positive results, um, should they encounter those, to the at-home testing. Uh, the upside to, for us as a district is one, we have a second round of insurance testing, but then even more so is, um, it frees us up from having to do contact tracing, which in my opinion was probably more effort than was worth. We weren't really finding a lot of cases through that, and it was tying up lots of, uh, man-hours to do that work, I think. When Brendan talked about some of the paperwork, um, you know, Bill Defoe talked about that was one of them. I talked to Jim Walsh of Tri-Town. Uh, I mean, he was just amazed at how much time they spent trying to subtract on a single case, um. And so, you know, again, we're, as you said earlier, a pretty lean operation, so that really stretches us pretty thin to try to do that contact tracing. Um, so before we do that, um, the move was wide, was widely supported by our nurses and our administrative staff, I was unanimous. Uh, we also prepared GLMC, who also unanimously supported it, so. Uh, we just rolled it out last week with the first round of tests at home for teachers. Uh, this week we'll be sending them home for, uh, families as well, so we're excited about that program as we move forward. Um, as it stands at the moment, um, just to give you an update, we have, um, I, our percentage of each building of vaccinated, um, persons in our school communities, or school communities defined as all of our employees plus all the students in the building. Um, and so at LMH S, we are at eighty-one percent of, um, those folks in that facility being vaccinated. And at Morris, we're at sixty-four percent of folks being vaccinated, um. And so Morris actually, uh, this is interesting, we had a pretty sharp uptick toward the end of the day as we learned of, um, new folks getting vaccinated. So at the elementary level, um, more and more folks are getting fully vaccinated, so that's increasing on a daily basis there. Um, one of the strange kind of, um, idiosyncrasies about Morris is that the, our youngest students, our pre-K are not eligible, so we're twenty-six students who cannot get vaccinated currently. Uh, there is, uh, quite a bit of talk about expanding, uh, the eligibility to our younger students, so, um, but that is always going to be a reality, that we're just gonna have that that number of kids, for the time being, those rules change, it cannot be back to it, but they still count in our count, it's not of eligible folks, it's of total folks, so.
Six or seven percent.
So what's the percentage of eligible?
So, um, the percent of eligible, I, I didn't run that, but I can run that, um, and, and all I had to do is just subtract off those, those from six, um. I'm gonna guess kind of, you know, bring it up a little bit, but not a ton, and that makes it two.
So it's two maybe, kids of Morris, two forty-four or so.
Three hundred and thirty, three oh nine, three oh nine.
Three oh nine, three oh nine, the.
I think it's two eighty-six, or two eighty-three without three school. Total, so.
Yeah.
And Mark, it's sixty-four for Morris overall, what is that for Morris students?
So for Morris students, um, we have one hundred and seventy-one of the three hundred and nine students vaccinated, Morris is fifty-five percent.
And there, currently there are eleven students who have one dose, or leaving for eleven. I know that we had several students leave today to the vaccine clinic that was offered, so.
Is it one for PD centers today, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's great. So then, at LMH S, we're maybe one percent. We could at least begin a conversation about whether we want to continue the mask and positive one, based on DESI's.
Do we have, do we have to ask for that permission to mask up right now, or, um, the chair, Chairman Riley said, the Fisher Riley said, the DESI mandate is till the end of the month of February right now.
End of, right.
Unless you would ask for the waiver?
If you're changing, it's like you can ask for a waiver.
But do you get it automatically or have to ask for it?
You have to ask for it, yeah.
Uh, you might really ask as much as just say you're doing it, and then I just have to affirm that we're at, um.
So it's, it's sort of a, just an affirmation process, not a whole application or some oversight?
Yeah, yeah, it's a pretty quick and, uh, easy process, um. And Mr. Rinaldi, to answer your question, the percentage change is when you subtract off the, um, the pre-K kids from twenty-five percent of those students to sixty percent, which brings the building from sixty-four percent overall to sixty-eight overall.
To sixty-eight?
Yeah. And, and again, that continued to change, um, you know, trending more positively is more kids getting vaccinated. Um, one of the things there too is we had a number of kids who had COVID, so they had to wait hopefully to get the, the final dose.
So I guess the question then becomes, do we want to make a, do we want to make a decision about high school?
I'd love to have a discussion about it within the group, just to kind of see where everybody stands on it. Um, I do know as of January fourteenth, DESI, uh, granted thirty-one school districts of the vaccine rates eighty percent or higher, um. Permission to lift the mask mandates, of course, you know, if students choose to wear them, that's totally fine, um, not saying you can't wear them. Um, but I think it's important at this point, knowing especially that we are just over the eighty percent mark, to have, um, some discussion surrounding it.
And what is our, um, let's see, commitment, I mean, obviously those policy decisions are made here, but um, in our collaboration with our jointly managed, that's what you're calling it, the jointly managed committee, in just being able to talk about this decision, I mean, because we have faculty, we have students, we have a whole community. Um, I know our faculty are actually a higher percentage of people that are vaccinated, but, um, do we have a, a commitment to go back to them before we make a decision? Um.
So if the policy is written currently, we do, right? The JLC, um, has to have that discussion, um, terms of what's the, the, the policy. Clearly, the boards always, you know, have liberty to create any other policy they want that would, you know, supersede that policy. Um, so, you know, if that's the, the direction you want to go, that, that's always an option. But if we're gonna stick with the existing, uh, relationship that's been established, that will be going through the JLC, um, and having that discussion there.
There's one that I have, is I, I believe our next meeting is next week. It's just a week from tonight, rather than a long, prolonged. And I just think in general, we're working with individual community, we're a small community, we've always talked about that. We want to try to be transparent and cooperative, so I think we should continue the conversation, but I would just suggest that we, if it's possible to convene that group this week and try between now and next meeting, to really just, you know, have that conversation at that level as well. If there was a strong opposition to a change, and we discuss that next week, we, doesn't mean that we are bound by it, but I think it's just out of respect, it'd be important to feel like that conversation is happening, um, openly transparently, rather than, yeah, it's a week, it's not a question of, you know, we're not meeting a plan for a long time.
And that may arrange, the only thing that I would, you know, wonder about is that the JLC gives us two voices in the conversation, right? So it gives the administrative voice, and it gives us, um, and the school committee voice, um, kind of on one side, and also the, um, the voice of our employees. Uh, what's left out of that conversation is, is parents, and so, um, you know, if we're gonna entertain this discussion, I'd be inclined to maybe consider putting out another survey of families to see where they are maybe, you know, thinking has evolved over time. Um, you know, and I think that would help, you know, make a, a more sound decision if they had a little bit, but again, it's not gonna be a popular vote, but at the same time, I think it's helpful maybe to have more voices in the conversation than just those two stakeholders.
Is there another JLC meeting?
We don't, but we have no problem scheduling one.
Yeah, it's something to consider along with it. First of all, you know, some of that community has guided a lot of the decisions in the last couple of years, it, it would I think it'd be a very good protocol to have them in the lead on the conversation.
Oh yeah, absolutely.
And then secondly is, I think we need to plan on the other side of that, so we're talking about taking masks off. What's the trigger point for bringing them back on? Because the way this is going, we're gonna wind up cycling back to another, another something, right? So we should be ready for, um, how to make a decision. You know, much like we've been, constantly in that situation, making adjustments is needed. So that would be a good, good feedback to get from that group. Sort of, sort of the K guys, which we'll look at and decide.
And I was thinking in terms of the time, you, you type of, next week. Um, next week is the high school, and, uh, the very lengthy presentations that we'll have next week, I was actually thinking since we meet on the twenty-eighth, that, and it's gonna be a vacation week in between, that if, I don't see a downside to waiting till the twenty-eighth to make a decision, we'll have more time to discuss it as a committee, that we may not need a lot of discussion, but, um, but we will, you know, Mark will have that time to get feedback from parents. JLC will have a little bit longer frame to meet. Um, and, and we can make the decision on the twenty-eighth.
Well, right now, the DESI rule is like, in effect, with the end of February, right? At which, and do we have any insight? I know we can't see into the future, but as to whether they would lean towards.
I actually have the DESI website today to see if there's any updated guidance, and, and there's no, nothing has happened. I mean, they, they meet once a month.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I just, I, I, I just want to disagree with the idea that there's no downside to waiting a month. There's a month of every LMH student having to wear a mask, which many of them undoubtedly don't want to do, much as any of us choose not to do so every day, much as last week we took our masks off every time we had something to say to the whole meeting. So I, I certainly don't think there's no downside, um, we could, and, and I think we need to acknowledge that every day we just let inertia, um, leave policies in place, we're really doing students a disservice. Uh, I was just, at this point, clarification, when we signed the MOA with uh, the LEA over the summer, we actually did resolve this question, the final provision the MOA says, pursuant to DESI guidelines, if any district school reaches eighty percent total vaccination status, the JLC will relieve that school community from masking or parent. Um, so under the MOA, insofar as Mark makes the determination that we already sent, we've in fact already agreed both the school committee and the LEA that the masks should come off.
But we've agreed to absolve them of their responsibility. Not that we've agreed that it'll take off and agree that it would be our decision, not necessar- they're, they're absolved. Do I agree that they're absolved of the responsibility, it then shifts to us?
Sure, if we, we still want to, as a committee, go great further, we can, but, but we had already worked through, a, a little bit to Bob's point, that you know, we need to have KPIs for these things. This is the one KPI we actually move out, discuss, and said when we get to eighty percent, at least for purposes of discussion with, with the LEA, um, that, that everyone was convinced at that time we in the same direction on it. Um, I guess I also just wanted to make sure we widen the discussion a little bit beyond masks, which is obviously the sort of hot button issue, but there are all sorts of things still going on in the schools that are intended to be COVID mitigation. And I personally am very skeptical is, is having an effect. Um, I, I sent the basic charter around master sets did not achieve any mitigation success against Omicron relative to states with, with much weaker uh, or more lenient approaches. And so just as I think about things like, I believe the students at, that Morris are still sitting by, you know, part all facing the same direction at lunch, that.
Yes.
Um, so there's that, I believe there are still signs on the doors telling adults in the community they shouldn't enter the buildings. Um, I know that at least in Morris, there are a lot of parents who are facing real challenges sending their kids to school in the face of guidance that they need to be in their, it's home, that this testing protocol, that testing protocol. And so it, it seems to me that it, it would be appropriate to have a conversation. You know, masking is one piece of this we have the least control over, in a sense, um. So at, at least at LMHS, at this point, we do have a lot of control over it. Uh, but, but there's a general sort of posture toward COVID, and, and that's why I requested that we sort of think about this concept of an off-ramp, and, and really as a committee, ask what is it that we think we are accomplishing at this point on whose behalf, and at what cost? And I think we, for the last two years, asked children to bear extraordinary burdens despite themselves not being the ones who are especially at risk for the sake of those who are vulnerable in the community. Uh, and at this point, everybody in the community uh, who would have been especially vulnerable at, at age five and up have, have had more than adequate opportunity um, to become fully vaccinated. And, and so just to think, this just really jumped out at me from, um, Dr. Kenny, the, the chair of the, of Tri-Town. At the meeting last week, uh, uh, the Tri-Town meeting, he said, um, for Omicron, where people are fully vaccinated, it's evolving into something that's not much worse than the common COVID. Um, so I, I guess my recommendation would be that, that the community adopt a policy that obviously we're still going to comply with whatever mandates or requirements or laws are on the books. Um, but that beyond that, it is the clear expectation that, that business be returning to normal. And I guess to the extent that community members don't want to go that direction, I, it, it would just be helpful to understand why not, or, or what else would we still plan to wait for?
Yeah, fair point, fair points. It, it, it took us two years to wind all this stuff together, and how do we start to unwind it?
Well, I can tell you how we unwind it, I can think of a machine with a tone, and the policy of school pretty different tomorrow. But that, that wasn't my question, my question is why aren't we doing that?
Well, I think, but like you said, masking is one portion of this, right? So up until today, there was some, uh, confusion about testing, um, protocols within the school nurse's office, particularly at Morris, uh, what's considered, you know, the list of COVID symptoms could cover anything from a stomach bug to allergies to a sinus infection to COVID to the flu, you name it. Um, there's some massive confusion around whether or not we can even test vaccinated students anymore, um, it, it, there's there's some disconnect, I think, between what DESI has put out, and I don't think any of us are surprised by that, um, and communication with, uh, our school community, right? So, um, I, I think as a whole, we need to really look at these policies and start deconstructing them.
And that's a question of dispel what you said about, the confusion is that some people are saying you can't adequately test a child who's been vaccinated, or they say they're not, they're not.
So DESI, yeah, DESI originally had a policy that said that if a child um, was vaccinated, that you couldn't test them because the vaccine would trigger a false positive. Now, that was, I think, a backward-looking, um, and a, a space-bound, uh, uh, assumption at the time, pre-Omicron, we saw these breakthrough cases.
Yeah.
I think now, you know, maybe the calculation is different, given what we know about, you know, this variant, not the other sub-variants, but, um, you know, so but what DESI doesn't do a good job of is cleaning up. But, um, you know, so what D E S I doesn't do a good job of is cleaning up that kind of like legacy information that's out there. In fact, even you look at their, their updates, it starts with whatever was served them. They kind of build on from the bottom, but it never takes the old stuff out. And so people are kind of left wondering, is this still good or not? And so I think that's where some of the confusion lies with looking at some of D E S I's protocols. I'm sure they evolved and just as, you know, confused as some was event and trying to navigate that. So I literally cut through the chase today, reached out to D E S I and said, like, you know, what's the story? Like, if we have a kidney symptomatic, can we test them? And they were like, yeah, you can do that, like, but, you know, previous original, no, if they're not full testing, you can't test them, like, you know, you're asymptomatic. And we thought, well, that makes no sense.
Yeah, right.
You know, if, if the object is to, you know, keep our community safe, like, you know, let's have some sort of common sense middle ground. And so, um, I was happy to receive the, the response from them today.
If my feeling about it is, and, and Orin, thank you for bringing that forward because there's been many agreements and I don't have the law committed to memory, but that was actually why I wanted to suggest that we have a, an announcement today that we're delivering, uh, this is what we're looking at. Go to the committee, we're back here on Monday, because I feel like that's a very short amount of time. And I do feel that there are families that were, that are impacted, especially when we think about the elementary school. Um, I know we're not, I'm assuming we're not talking about, maybe we are talking about the elementary school, but we haven't reached the 80% at elementary school. So it seems that it would be premature to do that, uh, unless you also want to have a discussion about that, which.
Oh, it's, it's premature, but there are other things we're still looking at.
Right, so, and I definitely think we need to move in another, in a, in a, some type of a direction if it's possible. It keeps feeling like it's possible that it gets pulled down the line. So I just feel that with one week away, it's worth it to say, let's have a conversation. Let's include parents. You know, we did, I hear you, Orin, when you say in a larger number, people, you know, the children are not as vulnerable. We heard some pretty compelling conversations of families that deal with children with serious illnesses, and those children are trying to be in our schools and live a normal life as possible when they have very serious things. So I do think that we, and those children who wear, wear masks certainly, and I understand that some families should and would make a choice that, and even some staff members would make a choice to wear a mask because of their own health needs. And we would encourage and support that. Uh, but I just feel like we don't want to suddenly tell someone, okay, everything's shifting again tomorrow and you not had a chance to be heard. I mean, it, it, I don't think it needs to wait till the 28th. Um, but I, I just am asking that we continue the conversation next week with some real specific that this is what we're gonna be talking about. And, and, you know, and I want to learn a little bit more. I mean, you know, we take the masks off and there are other ways in which, you know, you know, kids are eating and other things. Like, the masks come off, the rules about how they sit in the cafeteria should probably be up too. I mean, if, if L M M H S though, they're having a much, how are they behaving in the nice school for the cafeteria?
So, I mean, I think in the, in the high school cafeteria, things have been okay. But I think, you know, in talking with, um, Mr. Knabel, you know, he is saying, I think we can go back to, um, regular seating, uh, because the way the kids kind of seat naturally, it's in the same places, you know, most days anyways. Even, you know, if we had to kind of try to figure this out, even without the contact person anymore, that if we had to contact this, you know, because that was, you know, up until a week ago, what we had to do, um, then he could have done that pretty easily. Um, so, you know, he's looking forward to being able to get back to a normal lunch set in the cafeteria. Um, you know, and so that's the feedback that I've got from, from there. Um, the only thing he's uncertain as to like, when the, you know, committee thinks that it's the right time. Uh, but, you know, he seems to think that, uh, it wouldn't really change much by going back to a normal lunch set.
And then that raises another question that I mentioned, I saw the notice tonight, something that was reported in the Globe about conversations or, or maybe a kid from you about shaking hands again? Uh, students being able to shake hands at, at sporting events? I don't know, I was, I was trying to homework today. So it came up about saying that the M I A is encouraging the sportsmanship, like, if it's not an actual handshake, it'd be a disbump or something where, um, athletes acknowledge each other rather than staying away from each other because feeling that that presumes some level of collegiality and sportsmanship. And that was in the, in the discussion. Um, but I believe the M I will still have a mask, maybe, because you'll have mixing student, you know, students from different schools that may or may not have lifted a mask. So that when they're in the competitions, they would have masks anyway, I presume.
So right now, any indoor event for M I double A, um, requires student athletes wear masks. Regardless of what the day-to-day, you know, reality of schools. So I know like for a fact that Lexington is one of the school districts that was able to, um, reach 70% and, um, we're no longer requiring masks, uh, um, you know, it's optional. But again, if Lexington plays, you know, one exception game, uh, those students, you know, would have to still wear masks during that, let's say, basketball season, the rest.
And again, when it comes to spectators, we have a wide variety of people. So perhaps we have to think about that too. So will we having visitors wear masks or are we having spectators wear masks? So you go into the sort of, you know, you know, we just want to be really clear, you know, that.
D E S I's guideline is for all folks indoors. So that's the athletes, that's spectators, referees, everybody at that event must be masked. That's the current rule for indoor sports.
So there are only some things that are beyond our control this time. Uh, but I think what, what, what I'm referring to more is like the law heading, right? Like, like, there are things that we could be implementing and, and I, I hope it's okay if I ask you, or in the kind of share your thoughts on the, the lunch seating arrangement at Morris and if there's anything holding you back from that.
So ideally, if I wanted to have a cafeteria's tables back after Martin Luther King Day, that was like my goal, two weeks we come back, everything's going good, and then Omicron fit. So now my goal was when we come back from February vacation, but it just needs a little bit of planning. Um, because there is always like lunch seating and things like that, um, and to notify the parents. So, uh, trust me, I think about that every single week. I mean, we use the cafeteria not just for lunch, but for professional development. We had to do a lot of things differently. So the sooner we can get everything back to normal, the better. Um, so that is something that I'm always thinking about.
And I think last week's pool testing counts were extremely, um, encouraging. I think, right, we had, uh, one, one student from each school, um.
Where was the eight, was the week before, right?
Correct, yeah, this is from last week, the 25th, I think.
Yeah, I, I, we're sort of, we quickly go back into each particular thing and what we have control over and what, what don't we? I do think part of this committee being affected is going to be setting a clear standard and way of approaching it and then asking the administration to make sure it's acting accordingly, not sort of going group by group, space by space. And so, you know, Ryan, I think your point about, you know, people are still vulnerable is, is exactly the, the right one to raise. I, I think the reality is that we are at a point where these dangers, again, for people who are vaccinated, people who've chosen not to be vaccinated or facing a different situation, but I don't think our policy should be on their behalf. And generally, if they chose not to be vaccinated, they, they don't want the policy on their behalf either. Um, for people who have been vaccinated, and, and this is exactly the point Dr. Kenny was making, COVID just isn't COVID anymore, the, the way that we thought about it. Are there people who are still uniquely vulnerable to respiratory infections? Absolutely, but not more so than to influenza, you know, for the littlest kids than to R S V. And so I, I really think it's important and, and totally, we don't make any decisions tonight, but I think it's really important that everybody come next week prepared to make decisions based on and answered the question, why are we still doing any of this? Who is it that we're trying to protect? What are we trying to protect them from? And to what extent do we actually believe any things we are doing are having that effect? Because again, it's a very crude measure, but Massachusetts did exactly the same. We're actually slightly worse than Florida with Omicron. That's just the reality. And, um, at the point where, unfortunately, we have a high vaccination rate overall in Massachusetts, at the point where, you know, the, you also have the decoupling from hospitalizations and so forth, and the strain on the hospital. In, in my mind, what that really points to is that it's not actually a, a question of expertise at this point. I mean, Denmark just lifted all COVID restrictions as of today. Um, they have excellent public health experts in Denmark. And conversely, there are, well, I don't know if there's anywhere more intense than Massachusetts, but there's Massachusetts, which clearly is not on that route. And so I, I totally agree that, that the public health input is incredibly important. I guess I just want to hear from you a little bit more how, what you're actually looking to hear from that. I mean, it, it could be, for instance, it doesn't seem to me we should prioritize what somebody at Tri-Town Health thinks over leading public health experts nationally. But again, there, there's disagreement among them because it's not really about the science at this point. It's, it's a, it's a values question.
I, I, I guess, I, I, I guess, you know, I, I'm looking at it not necessarily. First of all, I, I, I guess it would be local because you, you, I, I think you would need to limit the database that one pulls from, and it may as well be local as a pulling from, you know, globally. Um, and, and I guess, I, I guess I'm looking at, I, I guess I'm, and perhaps I'm idealistic in the view that I've been looking at someone that's pulling in the, the global amount of data, not picking and choosing, um, data to, to fit up an opinion or have an opinion piece and, and, and pick, you know, this data point and that data point and put them together. But rather someone that's, that's synthesizing the entire, um, uh, body of information. And I think that's where, um, uh, and, and that's where, well, everything is, there, there's going to, there's an opinion component to everything. But that is indicative. And if you follow the path of data, then you get, then you get a result. It may not be positive, but it's indicative.
But so what, what data are you looking for?
Well, I don't know, you gotta follow the data.
Well, which, what, what sources of data? What, what, what data points will influence your decision?
Uh, the culmination of the indicative data. I mean, the person who's synthesizing, or the groups that synthesize it all, so.
I'm, I'm sorry, I could press you on this case. If, if we're gonna say there's data that's gonna be the best answer, what, what data are you looking for? What piece of information would help you make the decision?
Uh, you would work for the synthesis of the entire, uh, you look where the data, where the data goes.
Which data?
The whole body of data.
Can you give an example of a piece of data that should inform this?
Well, you know, data can be positive and negative. It can, it can support your theory, it can debunk your theory. But at the end of the day, it all funnels down to which was it? Did it debunk it or did it support it? That's the way data works.
Well, and just to some degree, you know, Orin, I hear you about you saying, well, Denmark this, or we could say that about a million different places. But we do actually have a Tri-Town Health Department. I mean, we're elected to the Lennox School Board, School Committee. The Tri-Town Health Department is hired, appointed, whatever, however their authority. And so to some degree, I think we're looking at them as our local healthcare, healthcare experts, if you want to call it that, to give us some information. They've been in the conversation. I don't think it's the only point. I don't think it's only that point. I don't think it's the only thing we need to know. But we're not gonna sit here and convene over a hearing and have, as you said, 10 experts of this and 10 experts of that. The way we proceed is, is dealing with a couple of entities. We've had D E S I, because that's our governing body of our state institution of education, and they do have some authority over us, not a hundred percent. And then we're looking at our local Tri-Town Health. And I think that just kind of makes sense. And each of us are gonna talk to people we like to talk to. I like to, I like to email my doctor, who's a local community member, and kind of get ourselves a sense of what, what we're trying to do. It seems to me the Tri-Town Health is already part of the Joint Labor Management Committee. And, and that just seems to, that seems to make sense to me that we have their input. If they're not available and they didn't want to give it, then we, we march on and we make our decisions. But I think that's.
Actually, I'll, I'll talk about it. If, if we're not broadcasting, I'll tell you. Uh, uh, I'm not opposed to, to, to looking at. Uh, I'm not opposed to 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 looking at this and and look at you. At that point, there's my son, who's like, no one is is following good math protocol and M M M H, uh, L M M H S. So, um, so I I actually really think that there's, but I can't use my son as a data point. I mean, it's his opinion. He's there. He's looking at it. It's like people aren't, they're walking around without masks. They're doing this, they're doing that. They're close to each other. And we got low numbers, but I can't use that.
Okay, I'm gonna put Mark on the spot for a minute. So Dr. Weston Element is a infectious disease specialist at Harvard Medical School, and I know that she spoke to. The Massachusetts superintendents. Do you mind sharing a bit of? Her opinions that this is someone's opinion that I would value tremendously as an expert in this field?
Yeah, so I mean, I think what she was advocating um, when she spoke to us was, I think, again, support for. Moving away from contact tracing as we're um starting to consider. Other ways to to mitigate Covid. I think she also was trying to um. Further the the concept, uh, which again, she wrote about in the Washington Post as well about. Mitigation of risk and where is that that balance um of the. Health of students in their social emotional development um and also in um. The risk of preventing the disease. Now, I think what Element left out, if I could editorialize a smidge, I would say is that. Um, there are some students who also um. While masks may have impacted their social development, there are others who um also are are fearful and that taking off masks. Is also um a psychological um, you know, thing they would have to wrestle with. And so that's another balancing act. Now again, maybe choice. Can solve that. I'm not sure, right? But that's another thing that we hear. And I. As I look at this this broad picture, I hear Element, I think she uh makes a very compelling point. I think that we do have to start to look at life after Covid. I cannot wait for that day. But at the same time. One of the things that still sticks with me personally is seeing the numbers of absences, uh, which is just starting to smooth out a little bit. And. Um, you know, the number one priority for me, you know, as a as a school leader and as district leader is keeping kids in seats, right? And in schools. And so. You know, whatever decision we make, I want to make sure that we're trying to take that into account as well. Um, that we're just finally starting to see that, both from our staff and from our. From our students and from our staff, right? So staff attendance has been way up the last couple of weeks. Things look better. Uh, student attendance is finally getting back to, you know, what it was pre Omicron holiday spike.
I think that's where risk tolerance comes in though, right? I mean, I don't think anybody in this room would say. You would ever tell someone they can't wear a mask or or treat that person differently for deciding to continue to wear a mask. Um, but I think that that's important to talk about is everybody has a different level of uh comfort when it comes to risk. And I, that's what I think she kind of hammered on.
Yeah, and and I do think we should adhere to the sort of follow the science value that has been. So central to a lot of these debates. I mean, to say, you know. These children should wear masks, even though we all grant that they're not actually accomplishing anything. If if maybe we don't grant that, but if if we can't say anything they're actually accomplishing. But the children should still wear them because that makes other people feel better. At at some point, if if we're going to, again, if if we're following the data and and the public health model. We need to actually do that. So, you know, I I understand we're gonna discuss it more next week. I I think if if. It's possible to have someone from tri town here to answer questions and and explain how they would think about it. I think that would be tremendously valuable. Um, but I I don't think a sort of written statement from tri town of here, you know, here's what we think. Gets us anywhere above the written statements from people who are advising superintendent statewide, you know, who. Who who are at least qualified. At the end of the day, I I I really do think it comes down to a question of. It's 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 a political choice. We can all look at the exact same data. And we're gonna have to decide. Are we ready to give kids normal school back? And and if not now, when would we be 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 ready?
You know, one of the problems is it's. We're making conclusions, not not making conclusions. It's it's um. Yeah, it's conclusions by omission. You know, you wear a mask, no one's, you know, these are, these are the levels. It's not like. Levels were high, we put masks on and all stopped. It's it's, you really only find out if masks work. In in our setting, if if you take them off and you've got indications in other places that they do. Um, but I must say from personal experience with Omicron, with a student. It's a bit flippant um for the good Dr. Kenny, right Kenny?
Kenny.
To say i- it's just like the. It's just like the common cold. I mean, no, they've not sat in a room and heard the halfing.
Right, but now Penny specifically dismissing the expert who you most wanted to consult in favor of your personal experience.
Well, I don't, I, well, actually, he's, well, no, no, you're, again, you're picking one person. Not necessarily an epidemic. I mean, not, you're you're not looking at the whole body. You're looking at that gentleman's opinion that it's a common cold. So that's not where I would, I wouldn't use his his opinion um.
But now you're kind of picking and choosing it out of the.
No, 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 I'm not picking and choosing. I'm saying he's not the person I would go.
I I would just encourage that maybe we, we've decided that we're gonna reconvene and I don't wanna.
Does that make sense?
I feel like we're getting into a little bit of a back and forth, and I don't think that that's.
Is it fair to say that we can invite the board of health to an emergency J L M C meeting this week? Mark and I will uh work on that together. And then additionally, um, I'm open to seeing if they, maybe Amy or Jim would join us on Monday. To do some question and answers.
I think that makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, and also, Mark, one other question would be helpful, really.
Exactly what we're deciding, meaning if we could just spell it out on a slide, you know. If we, here here is what we can choose. If we um seek the waiver. You know, whatever the right terminology is from DESI, that 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 results in this clear statement, like. Masking has now become optional for the entire school community or whatever it actually means. And then the other, the other pieces of it, you know, other, other. Things that follow, meaning would Mike Snible say, well, we need to rearrange the lunch, uh, what whatever else is in there. I think those all should just be laid out. So we're not kind of guessing.
And that's where I'm. We're not going back to normal. There is no normal now. Because even with Omicron, even though children were deathly ill, we almost couldn't stay off the bills. So if you can't, you have to keep that in mind too. There there's a, there's something out there that can make people sick enough they can't come to work. And it go, it was going very fast and we lost a lot of staff. We lost a lot of students. We didn't have many students in the building. So. There isn't gonna be a normal.
I I'd like to say it's not that they couldn't come to school because they were too sick to work. That 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 was not the Omicron problem.
Yeah, I, that's the problem I'm referring to, is that people were too ill to come to work. Period. Forget what they had. They did not feel up to the task of performing their jobs. They weren't restricted. They just weren't up to the task of doing their job. So. That was problem right there. And there's going to have to be, you know, we've seen it more. There's gonna have to be response plans and things still in place, still measures for vulnerable kids. Not gonna be normal. We can, we can improve things a great deal. I think it can loosen things up a great deal, but never like it was two years.
Okay.
Just like when we were no, were notified we were getting Teddy. We had students who are fearful of docs, so we had a plan for that. I'm just asking for a plan for, that's just what we need because we do still have some students who might be fearful of. Certain things and just planning for their social emotional health.
Yes.
Um, would be very helpful. Just like we, when we planned for Teddy, we just need to plan for the next step.
It's a completely reasonable and valid request, which is why we need to consider everyone else who is affected. So we can actually do the change management rates of this. That's what making a policy decision tonight would more, we don't have the ability to work through and and engage people and actually make them comfortable because there there are gonna be people on both sides of the question undoubtedly. You know, people who are upset if we move now, people who are upset if we don't move now. And you can't please everyone. There is no one answer that will. Make everyone happy. We're just gonna have to work through it either way. But we need to know what we're walking into.
Okay, um. Maybe in closing, maybe not. Um. The difficulty with having the public health people come next week is we have typically tried to have the meeting when the high school presentations are. Be strictly high school presentations because of the sheer number of people who'll be coming to this and. Um, and that will be lengthy in itself. And so to have Jim or or. Or Amy come is fine, except. If we have them at the beginning, it pushes all our teachers till eleven o'clock at night. And if we have Jim or Amy come, pushes them to some unknown.
Can we meet separately to discuss? I think it's a big enough topic where it.
We. We we could definitely have a separate meeting.
I don't want to take away from the high school.
No, 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 because there's gonna be, and they all have to teach the next day.
Right.
Which is why we tried to just keep it, keep it, you know.
I think.
But we could have a meeting just about this, yeah.
Correct, yeah. And that way we can all stay on topic and not have to worry about, you know, taking up other people's time. Thank you guys for staying this late.
Yes, you can go, by the way. You don't need to.
So perfect. When are we, um, when, can we just quickly discuss? If we can try to put something together?
If, you know. You want to have the J L M C meeting first, right?
Yeah, I mean, we we often meet on an emergency basis and we we're pretty good at pulling people together. Um, I'm going to. Work with Amy and see if we can get that scheduled for um mid this week, maybe Wednesday.
We could, we could meet. We could meet perhaps as early as Thursday if if we post it. I mean, are people available?
Emergency does not need to be posted. It's not an elective or.
I think he means the the meeting.
Yeah.
So I just have a quick question because I know you're meeting with your labor team on Tuesdays. What time do you meet?
Four to seven.
Was thinking about, if we met at seven, the reality is that like if it was only about the health, it's the next day. After our budget meeting, if we, if Tuesday we met after you met, as labor, some of the people are here, staying a little longer, but.
That's tomorrow.
It would be the, no, next Tuesday.
Oh, okay.
No, next Tuesday.
We don't have any, it's every other.
Yeah.
Oh, so you don't have anything next week anyway. That's it. It would be the eighth.
Yeah, but the eighth, I, the eighth day of school building committee. Um.
I guess the question would be if there's other committee meetings that are meeting here, and if we just piggyback them and we only dealt with that one issue, I'm only guessing that our meeting. It might be long, but it would be as long as a whole meeting plus.
But I think the, I mean, in my opinion, I I'd like to have this separate meeting ahead of time before. The next.
Before Monday's meeting?
Yes.
Yes.
Well, we've, you've got another meeting you're trying to wedge in between. So I'm just.
Yeah, I know, I I understand.
Thursday, I just feel like it's a little tight. We have to notice, notify that tomorrow and we don't even know if we've got the other meeting. So realistically, if it's not, maybe Friday or Tuesday really seems to be the closest days available.
Why not Thursday?
Because you still have to find out when your meeting's gonna happen. It hasn't been scheduled yet.
Notice the meeting and cancel it.
Right, right. We can, we can post a, we can post a school community meeting for Thursday night and then cancel it if we, if. If they haven't been able to have their meeting.
I know. And the J L M C has been great about, I mean, I can't speak for everybody, but they've been pretty good about, you know, getting together when something is urgent.
I'm be, I'd be open to that Thursday.
So Thursday at six thirty?
Any any receptivity to having it slightly earlier?
I agree.
I'd be open, open to earlier.
I'd be open to earlier.
Me too. It's my birthday, so earlier would be better.
How 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 early could could people do it?
I could be here at five, five thirty.
Bob, I know you travel. Five thirty?
I don't, I don't know. I I I I would be.
Okay.
Doesn't matter.
All right, so we'll, we'll uh post it for five thirty? Amy?
Yes.
With only one topic.
What are we calling that topic?
We're gonna call it.
Covid, what do you call it? At last, maybe?
Off ramp, off ramp from Covid, question mark.
Question mark, exclamation point.
Exclamation point.
Well, which exclamation point is really matter? Like which punctuation matters? That's really the question.
Listen. Someone who's a classically educated.
Can I, can I just jump in while you're talking about calendars? Because we mentioned the twenty eighth, and at the last meeting we had asked that we be scheduled the twenty eighth because I'm gonna be on a plane.
Yeah, we've decided to go with the twenty eighth because other people were just saying we schedule the meetings, we need, we need to try to stay. Um, because it was gonna be difficult. Other people weren't gonna be available if we moved it. And we thought.
Well, I didn't know that you decided that because we talked about doing it.
But we thought we'd take the chances that you'll actually will get here.
No, no, I'm gonna be on a plane.
So I can't.
Oh, I thought you were.
Overnight until we're told for the next day. No, no, I'm actually gonna.
Oh, okay. I thought you were, it was a matter of your.
No, I'm gonna be on a plane from Hawaii to here. But that's, I mean, the only thing that normally it's perfectly okay for me to not be at a meeting. The reality is that's our hearing on the budget when we have to vote on the budget. So I think, you know, and I get it, we announced it.
You know, when we vote on the budget is the fourteenth of March.
It's fourteenth of March. You know, what's on the twenty eighth?
It's just a discussion about. You may. Motion adjourned, second. All in favor?
Aye.